Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the rolls so that we can establish a quorum?
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Shenier. Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And I do expect Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Harris momentarily.
Well, Councilmember Carr is right here. And it's appropriate timing here, Councilmember Carr. Well, first of all, let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Ashby, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome to everyone here in the audience today and all those watching on Channel 14. We begin tonight with several special presentations and a very special, special presentation here. I would like to turn the deus over to Councilmember Carr for a great announcement and recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is a big day for Sacramento. We're going to deal with the $1.2 billion budget in a few minutes, but we did something very special today. We recognized one of our own. He grew up right here in Sacramento, in Meadowview, as a matter of fact, and today we were able to dedicate, change the name of Richfield Park to LeVar Burton Park. And I think we've just about worn Mr. Burton and his family out because it was hot out there today. But LeVar stayed around and signed autographs and took pictures and has just been a delightful person. Of course, most of you know his story, that he grew up in Meadowview, went to several schools in Meadowview and Galt. He went to USC, starred in Roots, Star Trek. Why don't we just play the video?
Meadowview is the proud home to one of the safest and most diverse communities in the city of Sacramento. There have been a host of prominent Sacramentoans who once or still call Meadowview home. Among them is LeVar Burton, accomplished actor, storyteller, director, and producer. He grew up right here, attending St. Anne's, St. Charles Borromeo, and graduated from St. Peter's the 10th Seminary in Galt, California. While attending USC's College of Performing Arts in 1977, he starred as Kunta Quinte in the groundbreaking mini-series Roots. This series drew an audience of over 130 million, nearly half of the U.S. population at the time. He went on to star in seven seasons of the television series Star Trek: The Next Generation as Lieutenant Commander Geordi La Forge. He then continued that role in several full-length Star Trek movies. But his true passion was drawn from his childhood, where he was encouraged by his mother to read books every day.
Reading Rainbow.
Reading Rainbow.
LeVar Burton was host and executive producer of the 37-time Emmy Award-winning children's show Reading Rainbow. Reading Rainbow is one of the longest-running children's shows ever aired on PBS, and LeVar Burton himself won 12 Emmys.
Through the pages of a good book, you can go anywhere and be Emmy.
He has entertained millions with his iconic roles, continues to inspire us with his leadership and success, but has not forgotten his roots. LeVar Burton, welcome home.
And I have a resolution here from the City Council declaring this day, June the 11th, 2019, LeVar Burton Day.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
This has been an incredible day for me, for my family. Sacramento is in my blood. I feel like the rivers in this city run through my veins. Summertime, floating on the river in inner tubes, riding our bikes to Freeport, playing on the railroad tracks. I genuinely love this place, and it hasn't always been that way. I grew up, moved away, saw the world, and didn't really begin to appreciate Sacramento the way I do now until I was a much older man. It is essential to have roots, and I'm really proud that my roots are right here in this city.
I know.
I'll ask my council colleagues to come down and join me for a photo with Mr. Burton and his family.
Do you want to introduce your family, LeVar, please?
Please. My sister Letitia.
Who still lives here.
My daughter Mika Burton. And my wife, Stephanie Burton.
We are very proud of you, LeVar.
It's been such an emotional day.
Being the political analyst she was, my mother would have loved her.
She is here.
She is here.
She is definitely here.
She is here.
Thank you all very much.
If we ever need a Spanish speaking, let me know, Massa.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know if I can say that you stood young. You hold me a gentleman.
It's the way it started.
That is the way it started. We do have another presentation.
It's postponed.
I'm sorry?
It's postponed.
Oh, that's postponed. I think the LeVar Burton Day presentation should stand alone anyways. Okay. Let's go to the consent calendar. And I know there are a few items. I know that Councilmember Harris wants to speak on Items 17 and 22, and that Councilmember Warren would like to pull Item 23 for discussion and a separate vote. Is there anything else, Madam Clerk?
We do have one speaker on the consent calendar.
Okay, we do have a speaker on the consent calendar.
Mr. McWorthy would like to speak on Item Number 27.
And Lisa Randolph.
Good afternoon, panel. What we are seeing here is policy keep changing. When you've got a corporation, you don't change policy every day for employees. That's a red flag. It's something wrong with the new administration. We see legal California's fingerprints all over this. It's not Doja situation. Doja is just as, and more, it's a figurehead. They're not calling the shots. Who is calling the shots? Of redevelopers. Where SHRA got everything tied up that's possibly for funds to go to them. Too much slush in one place. Now, education, diploma zone, you've got education, child development, and medical. People, those are the state and county welfare issues. Should never even be in housing. That has nothing to do with housing. That's individual, and you pull those things out of their administration and get professional people to run those things because we want to know what do you measure for child development and where did you get the criteria from to adopt it for measure? We want to know where did you get the criteria from? Black babies that die, from what I have people call me, there is nothing to identify. You just up and say, well, what the baby died from? What was the autopsy? What was the medical of the mother while she was carrying her baby? What was the condition of her health while carrying the baby? Those things should be in line and professional people rank those things out because you've got some people on there, it's dangerous to making decisions, is the same way with SHRA. You've got some thing that's dangerous because SHRA is just at the legal California city. Use that money, every 11 percent for a slush fund. And you see the same thing happening with SHRA today.
Thank you. I have no more speakers. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so Lynn, let us, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Harris for comments on Items 17 and 22. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. So on Item 17, it's a master services agreement with several consultants having to do with, you know, traffic studies and so forth. I think that perhaps my council colleagues are not aware of a rather large project being proposed in District 3 by the Department of General Services at the state. And it's a very large office complex for state workers. They can have dramatic ramifications in the River District and potentially affect MLS and the rail yards generally, including the Kaiser Hospital. One of our consultants did the traffic study for this particular project, and I know that staff and I are having some real difficulties with it because we feel that mitigations for potentially very substantial traffic snarls in that area of town, we don't feel that they were addressed properly. It was rather hastily prepared EIR because the state is on a tight timeframe. So I noticed that Farr and Pierce, who created the traffic study for this project, are up for renewal of their contract. I'm not suggesting that we stop the process because I think it's important that we have a stable of consultants to choose from, but I just wanted to make you all aware that you will probably be hearing more about this DGS project. It's very big. They're talking about building office buildings to have 6,000 workers, 6,000 workers in one small campus. So you can imagine that the traffic impacts from that are very big. We've recognized that a potential mitigation is double-tracking the green line, and that could help substantially. We're trying to move the state in that direction. So I just wanted to make those comments because I think that this is, you know, a project that could be a tremendous plus for the city, but also could give us some serious problems to work through in the future. And then on Item 22, which is basically funding projects for a regional park system, I was talking to Raymond Constantino in our Parks Department, and these projects are prioritized, but this is kind of a stale document, and things are rather dynamic and changing as regards our regional parks. I wanted to ask Councilmember Ashby if the North Atomas Aquatic Center project construction and this allocation of $250,000 is actually required for part of your build-out for that project, or if that money could be put to a different use at a different time.
Mayor, are you okay with me answering?
I'm sorry.
If you asked me a question, is it okay if I answer?
Yes, of course. I'm sorry.
Okay. So Councilmember Harris, I know you asked me that question just a little bit ago, and I don't know the answer. I don't know if that funding has been included in the projected budget for the aquatic facility or not, so I'm going to have to follow up and check. But I do think it's a good question because it's a fairly small amount in comparison to the relative project itself. So I would need to ask staff and maybe get back to you. I don't know if we pass the item today, if it can potentially be reordered later or something like that, but I'm happy to talk to city park staff about that in the future here in short term.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby. I appreciate that. Raymond, would you mind coming to the podium? You know, things are changing also at Sutter's Landing Regional Park in that the Lower American River Parkway Conservancy Program has allocated money through the Wildlife Conservation Board for us to be able to purchase a substantial amount of acreage to add to Sutter's Landing Park, and then that creates a need for an environmental study for both the Two Rivers Trail and to discover the highest and best use of the park. So what I'm driving at is there's kind of a dynamic aspect to the need for projects, and if we codify them in this order, I wonder if we're not limiting ourselves to, you know, moving in the right direction. So can you answer Councilmember Ashby's question first?
So what we did is we looked at the criteria based on the Park Impact Fee Resolution that kind of calls out a methodology for evaluating projects, and in addition, we also looked at shovel-ready projects. And obviously, the North Atomas Aquatic Center is a shovel-ready project, and 250, although it's not a large amount, is part of the overall funding that we're looking at for that project. And this time, I know that that's a topic of discussion coming up in the next couple of weeks, but it's one of the pieces. Small as it is, it is one of the pieces.
Well, I would just ask, moving forward, Raymond, that you look at this year by year and just to be cognizant of the changes and the needs in the parks. You know, potentially, we'll develop enough funds to do more than two projects a year, and so that would be reason for you to reprioritize. So that would be my direction to you, is that, you know, moving forward, you look at the projects as they develop because they are developing and rather quickly. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor. Very good. Thank you very much, Councilmember. On, quick question on the particular, go ahead, Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question, actually, and I apologize to agency staff, I didn't get to ask them before tonight, but on Item Number 28, La Chelle, I don't know if you're the best or one of your staff, but the scattered site demolition and disposition, application to HUD, as these units get transitioned, are we going to be project-basing vouchers there to ensure their affordability for a period of time, or what happens after these sites are transitioned into the next phase?
Right. This is very similar to what we did with the elderly high-rise buildings, but they just happen to be scattered. So they'll switch from the public housing platform over to the housing choice voucher platform, so no residents will be displaced. Tenant's rights will remain in place, and in fact, tenants will have more flexibility because they will be able to access a voucher, and instead of just moving within the public housing portfolio, they can now take that voucher and move, or they can remain there. It's their choice.
What's the affordability period? Is it in perpetuity, like on?
Perpetuity.
Okay, it's in perpetuity.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That really helps answer my question. One of the things that I would like us to consider in the future, though, is how we deal with discrimination against housing choice voucher awardees.
Yes.
And so that's not on here tonight, but I've been thinking about that as we try to think about our housing crisis and maybe you're not.
And in fact, there is legislation at the state to try and address that as well. I'd be happy to share that with you.
Yeah, please do. Thank you so much.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. The consent calendar has been moved and seconded.
I have seconds.
I'm sorry. By Councilman Shenier. Now it's been seconded. With the exception of Item 23, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, that passes unanimously. Councilmember Warren, Item 23.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we just had a fantastic acknowledgement of a Sacramentoan who has gone on to do great things, and appropriately so, we named a park after him in the South Area, and this item now is intended to do the same thing for an iconic person who has done some extraordinary things in the music industry, who is born and raised in Sacramento, whose family has been a pillar in North Sacramento. And so I'd like to ask the Brookins family to come to the podium, please. All of the Brookins family, please come up to the podium. So we are, we're going to be voting tonight, in fact, in just a few minutes, and I'd ask to pull this item because it's a non-controversial item, the council and the mayor in full support, but I asked to pull it so I could say a few words and then also so you could say a few words, and I know we have a two-minute video. But for those of you who are not familiar with Robert Brookins and really what he meant to the music scene in Sacramento, you will soon find out more about him. But, you know, for me, who grew up in the same neighborhood and went to the same schools, I've known him all my life, and unfortunately, Robert had a heart attack and passed away a few years ago, still a relatively young man, but his family is, has really been very instrumental in some of the dynamic changes that have occurred, not just when they were doing the music, but even today with Mervyn and what he's doing in the sports field for youth, and then with Nova now doing our Nightlife Right program, which will be a summer program also, that we will be voting on tonight for the funding for that, not just for our district, but for also a couple of other districts, and so that's going to be going forward. But without further ado, we'd like to hear from the Brookins family, and then also, Michael, I think you have a two-minute video.
Robert F. Brookins, Sacramento's musical prodigy son. He knew at a very young age, from Little Robert and the Bondells to the Ed Sullivan, Dean Martin, Phil Wilson, Johnny Carson, and Diana Shore shows, to Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. His solo albums, platinum-produced albums on many mega-stars you listen to today. The DNA of Sacramento's R&B music, Robert F. Brookins. Robert turned the music industry's eyes towards the River City, leaving high school as a junior to tour with world-renowned artists George Duke and Stanley Clarke. Robert was on his way to a very envious music career. Ten years as Earth, Wind &amp; Fire's musical director and co-lead vocalist, his sad passing in 2009 leaves behind a legacy to be treasured by all who knew and loved him. His Always Remembered Celebration, the annual Always Remember Celebration, sells out every year. It's Sacramento's premier Black Music Month event every first Saturday in June. The RBMA, Robert Brookins Music Academy, finds diamonds in the rough through music, dance, and vocal teachings throughout Sacramento and helps them shine. Robert F. Brookins, with the release of his brand-new CD available at rblegacy.com and at all Temple Records locations, this resolution puts the stamp of approval on the legacy of Robert F. Brookins, Sacramento's prodigy musical son.
All right, so. So with our actions tonight, we're going to be taking a park that, right now, is named Nuevo Park. It's in the middle of Del Paso Heights, and it's at a junction of where Strawberry Manors and Del Paso Heights kind of come together. And for those of you that really know this community, both of those neighborhoods, on occasion, are in conflict. And what we're doing is we want to unify this community through the love and the music of the Brookins family and particularly Robert Brookins, and this is why I think this park dedication is going to be very instrumental in really helping to heal some of the past conflicts that we've had in the city. And so without further ado, I'd like to hear from the Brookins family, and then we can take a vote on this very special occasion.
Well, I'd like to thank the council once again. I've seen you before. I've seen Ms. Ashley there. Her daughter goes to the same school as my daughter went to, so she would look at me like, hmm, I think I know him.
She didn't know you were famous, though, Michael.
The family, okay. Well, staying on subject, because I will do a preacher's tirade and go off, and my family will get me for that one, so I won't. Robert has produced some of everybody, from Nancy Wilson to when we were, second?
Kim Basinger.
Kim Basinger. We were in the studio with Barbra Streisand, and that blew me away because Robert, he's so fired up, just doing it, and I'm going, do you realize who you're working with? And so he's done many, many things. I'm sure you heard during the video where Diana Shore, we're talking Ed Sullivan, Dean Martin, so the gray is real. The gray is real. So we go way back. So there's a, this is a footprint in Sacramento when you talk about the legacy of someone where today they think it's like instant coffee. Let me do a song and put it out. No, the roots started here, and Robert Brookins was a vital part of that there that said, look, America, record companies, look what Sacramento, there are many musicians who have their livelihoods because of Robert Brookins. Roger Smith, Tower Power. It goes on and on, and the list goes on and on. So this would be that uniting of a community that we all grew up in and we're there daily to see it, hear about it, that would say, well, all of those who are doing things that aren't on an even keel might say, well, let me take a look at what this young man did because he was one of the foundations that said Sacramento, record companies, look this way, entertainment industry, look this way. And we, some of you are probably just as young as me, there was a group called Slowloris. They're going, Slowloris? La Sierra High School. This is how far, we were the first black African-American group to play at San Juan, Bella Vista. That's how deep we go. So to do this says there's more than just another guy being celebrated in Sacramento. This is the root of Sacramento. So when you look back in history and you go to that park and you go, yeah, I remember Rob, I remember, like Alan, I remember Rob, and so many people behind me, and so I say with all my heart, for us to see that, we can go and say, hey, let's go play at your uncle's park. That's going to be a beautiful thing. That's going to be, I know his niece couldn't be here because she was doing an internship in Washington, D.C. She graduates from Santa Cruz University, and when I heard she got the Chancellor's Award, and Robert and her were like, ah. So it's something that I know his spirit, which is So there's a, this is a footprint in Sacramento when you talk about the legacy of someone where today they think it's like instant coffee. Let me do a song and put it out. No, the roots started here. And Robert Brookins was a vital part of that there that said, look, America, record companies, look what Sacramento, there are many musicians who have their livelihoods because of Robert Brookins. Roger Smith, Tower Power. It goes on and on. The list goes on and on. So this would be that uniting of a community that we all grew up in and we're there daily to see it, hear about it, that would say, well, all of those who are doing things that aren't on an even keel might say, well, let me take a look at what this young man did because he was one of the foundations that said Sacramento, record companies, look this way, entertainment industry, look this way. And we, some of you are probably just as young as me. There was a group called Slowloris. They're going, Slowloris? La Sierra High School. This is how far, we were the first black African-American group to play at San Juan, Bella Vista. That's how deep we go. So to do this says there's more than just another guy being celebrated in Sacramento. This is the root of Sacramento. So when you look back in history and you go to that park and you go, yeah, I remember Rob. I remember, like Alan, I remember Rob. And so many people behind me. And so I say with all my heart, for us to see that, we can go and say, hey, let's go play at your uncle's park. That's going to be a beautiful thing. That's going to be, I know his niece couldn't be here because she was doing an internship in Washington, D.C. She graduates from Santa Cruz University. And when I heard she got the Chancellor's Award, and Robert and her were like, ah. So it's something that I know his spirit, which is everywhere, is saying, you keep doing it. All of a beautiful niece that's going to Cal Berkeley right now. These are schools that you, and that's all from D2. That's what we do.
Yes, of course.
Well, first of all, in fairness to me, it's hard to recognize you without your neon-yellow Mr. Mike and your stop sign. I don't know what your parents did in the Brookins family, but Sacramento is darn lucky to have this family. Your brother, who we're honoring today, is actually only Brookins. I don't know. And the rest of you are like the people who do everything in every community, volunteer for everything. In your case, Mike, you keep every kid at NP3 safe every day before and after school. He's the DJ for the school. He's a million things, whatever needs to be done. And as far as I can tell, Coach Brookins is the caretaker of almost every kid in D2. You know, it doesn't matter if you're a cheerleader or a football player or just a kid who needs somebody to talk to. It seems to me the Brookins family shows up. So how appropriate to name a park after this family. I know your brother was famous for music, but the two of you are equally famous for serving the city of Sacramento. And I'm grateful to know you both and grateful that the Brookins family calls Sacramento home.
Thank you. So I call for a special vote. So we're going to vote now, and then we'll take a couple of pictures. But we're going to have a park dedication when we do the physical dedication at the park and take pictures and all that. And hopefully you guys will come back as well when we do that, okay? So Mindy, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to move this item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you.
Add something.
Sure, Mr. Carr.
Ask Councilman Carr.
When you have the dedication of the park, select a day when it's not 106 degrees.
I will put that on the list, Councilman Carr. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. It passes unanimously.
All right. You're right.
You cry?
I didn't know you cried. What's up, bro? Come on. We're going to go right up here, you guys. Take a picture.
It is. It is. Thank you.
Oh, you made me laugh.
So he was your...
I bet you do.
I came to the meeting the other day and saw the announcement of this album.
She makes up her own.
Chief, you need a new camera. Did you get a new phone?
Okay. Okay.
Good morning, guys. Just taking a picture. Here we go.
That's right.
I don't know. You want me to?
No.
No, let's go. Let's go.
Okay.
No way.
Very good. And now we move to another main event because we've had two main events here already this afternoon. But the main event, which is item 30, which is the adoption of the fiscal year 2019, 2020 operating budget and capital improvement budget for 2019 through 2024. Ms. Holmes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you is the adoption of the fiscal year 1920 operating and capital budget, the rescission of the old Measure U policy, and adoption of a revised economic uncertainty policy. Over the past six weeks, we have presented detailed information on the budget, presented various financial models, heard from business leaders, community groups, and employee organizations. Council has asked important questions and debated over the budget as a whole. The budget presented for adoption includes the proposed budget, transfer of innovation and growth resources, use of remaining fiscal year 19-year-end resources, and the release of reserves for pension and labor growth as those are included in the forecast before you. Additionally, includes a $40 million set aside for inclusive economic development funding. That $40 million economic development funding has been updated to reflect the use of $7.5 million for debt service for a proposed capital investment program, $15.5 million to fund the mayor council budget priorities as identified in the May 30th memo, funding $4.3 million investment in our youth, $7.9 million to enhance neighborhood services and citywide economic development, and $3.4 million to increase transportation opportunities. In our rush to get the report done, we did forget to, the memo is included as attachment one. It was also intended to be an exhibit to the resolution, and we'll be making that change with council's adoption of the proposed budget or of the budget tonight. As you can see, in fiscal year 1920, the city's commitment towards inclusive economic development exceeds $40 million. In order to maintain $40 million in the next fiscal year, the excess has been credited towards that goal. While the out years of the forecast are negative, this forecast does not include future labor growth or potential savings from the management partner studies, which we'll hear later this summer, or year-end resources. This model provides flexibility to use available one-time resources and allows for adjustments to the inclusive economic development set aside to balance the budget. Delivering the proposed budget on time, as well as the many reports and forecasts we have prepared, would not be possible without the support and assistance of the city's executive team and their fiscal staff. I'd also like to thank the city manager and assistant city manager Millstein for their leadership and time as we have built forecasts and worked late in the night to figure out how to present this very complex information in a way that anyone could follow. Finally, I can't say enough, I am grateful to lead such an amazing team of professionals. Our budget team is small and mighty, and they've done an amazing job this year in preparing data in an effort to provide the information necessary for council. I would also like to thank the city council for their time and attention to the budget process. Staff from all departments and I are available to answer any questions you might have. This concludes my presentation, and I would respectfully request that council approve the budget, including the attachment of the mayor council priority memo to the resolution at the conclusion of the hearing. Thank you.
Clarify, the amendment question not only includes the projects funded this year, but the $40 million, intent to set aside $40 million a year for five years, and the bonding strategy that we discussed last week at Budget and Audit Committee.
That is correct. And that's what we've got in the forecast presented in the financial section of the report.
And we just want to make sure it's part of the motion, whoever the maker of the motion is. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. We do have public testimony, so let's hear from the members of the public, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have 17 speakers signed up. The first is Robert Copeland, then Maria Harrington, then Wanda Cleveland.
As part of Sacramento Tenants Union, I believe most of that Measure U funding should go to the Housing Trust Fund. None of the police because they're doing the wrong things right now. No more money for the police department. I mean, if they used that, if they, police were doing their job wisely and going after criminals instead of the homeless population, who are just trying to survive, we wouldn't need more police. Some should go to school activities or youth activities. And as far as the Aquatic Center, I think that should come out of the transient attacks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Harrington, and I am a business owner and founder of Casa de Español. We are not a nonprofit, but we are a small business here in the downtown area dedicated to building a bridge toward multiculturalism, multilingualism, and respect for each other's diverse backgrounds. And we wholeheartedly believe that the arts is one of the key pieces of the foundation of this bridge. We also thank the city of Sacramento and council members for your determined fervor to make the arts an instrumental part of Sacramento's future. I am here to support the mayor's budget memo, which includes augmenting funding for the arts in the amount of $900,000 to ensure a more significant implementation of the city's cultural plan, which will allocate a total of $2.2 million to the arts. Additional funding will provide highly needed support for local artists throughout Sacramento, renewal of the creative stimulus funding for entrepreneurial creatives, support for the youth, and grants to support historically underserved art organizations. Existing evidence shows that investment in arts and culture have impacts in our economy and the health and well-being of our residents. And honestly, art just makes life more fun. Again, I thank you all for all of your tireless work for our beautiful city. Councilmembers Hanson and Councilmembers Carr and Vice Mayor Guerra, thank you for your support for the cultural event for Oaxaca this past week here in Sacramento. Please, we must continue to support the arts here in Sacramento.
Next speaker is Wanda Cleveland. Following Wanda Cleveland is Grace F. Lawrence.
Yes, I think Measure U needs to go for more housing. I think that no more, no more money for the police department. No more money for the police department. You guys see what they're doing to the homeless out there? Maybe none of you care, but I've been out there personally and seeing what they're doing. I'm not happy. That's county, that's city, both. You guys sitting on millions of dollars that belong to the homeless and you're doing nothing for them except policing them. I have been to 5700 Stockton Boulevard. No good. I see they're now, they're trying to criminalize us advocates. Yes, Mayor, they are trying to criminalize. We are the foot on the ground for you guys. We are feeding them. We are taking care of things that none of you guys are willing to do. If it was your family, no more police money. I think Ashby deserves some of that money for her Aquatic Center. Al Grove's got one. And most of the city's area has things for them, for people. You need to reconsider that. No more money for police.
Our next speaker is Grace F. Lawrence. Grace F. Lawrence is our next speaker, then Chet Hewitt, then Pat Fong Kushter.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hanson, members of the city council. My name is Grace F. Lawrence. I'm the president and CEO of Global Transgender Safety Task Force. I'm also on the board of directors of Sacramento LGBT Center and Sacramento Pride. That's why I'm here. I'm here to thank you all very much for seeing us, hearing us, and helping us as the LGBT community expands. I'm so proud to be on the board with such wonderful women and men that our primary dedication is to promote our youth and young adults. As you know, in every structure, every organization, not everybody will be satisfied. But as a leader myself, at the end of the day, you will get a good sleep. Thank you so very much, and I support your budget.
Thank you so much for coming.
Next speaker is Chet Hewitt, then Pat Fong Kushter, then Les Simmons.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here today after a couple of weeks of coming out and encouraging very vigorously an opportunity to really present a budget that we felt prioritized the right things in the city. Our young people in particular, but also the communities that we know need your help and support to move forward. Very appropriate. Today, we celebrated two great individuals from two of the poorest communities in this particular city. And we think this particular budget will give many of the folks who are stars in waiting an opportunity to shine in their own regard going forward as well. This is a really great day for Sacramento. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making political promises real promises. I know it doesn't happen all the time and that everybody's always happy, but you made some commitments and you're living up to them. And Councilmember Hanson, we really appreciate your effort to find a way and a path forward that your colleagues on this particular body were able to follow as well. We believe that Sacramento is well-positioned to do some extraordinary, extraordinary things. Councilmember Chenier, really appreciate your focus in keeping us focused on young people. We know how important they are. They are the future of this particular city, and you have to invest in them now if you want to have a great city in the future. So we collectively are all here to say we are in support of this budget going forward. We think this is a historic day. There are many cities who talk about inequality. There are very few who are willing to act and do something about it and invest real money in the things that communities who are poor and have lost left behind actually need. And then finally, I want to say to Councilmember Ashby, we think that your Aquatic Center is something this city needs to have going forward as well. And if we have to, we will be back down here to help you advocate to make sure that happens going forward as well. It is a great day in this city. Thank you very much.
And I'm here just to continue to lift up what Chet Hewitt has lifted up. Again, thank you, Mayor, for just standing on the commitment that you gave with Measure U. When you start proposing this to the city of Sacramento, you have owned up to it and you have pushed through. And we are proud to lift you up as our mayor in advocating to save the lives of all of us and create a space that allows for future growth, create a space that allows a person to dream and say, my city sees me. It's really powerful. I'm standing alongside of all of us here. In addition, I have my dad here, my mom here, Dad Simmons and Mom Simmons, who have worked with you in the past in years when they were doing their thing. And it's just powerful to see the legacy and tradition that is continuing to be lifted up through your leadership. And then to Steve Hanson and your leadership in really creating the space that allows all of us to lean into in your efforts to move the conversation forward to make sure the budget reflects that of all of us. And so thank you for your efforts. And then to Councilmember Carr in my district, District 8. I think today and what happened with LeVar Burton and what you've advocated for and lifted up in our district, I think we're creating dreams. We're creating that next reading rainbow. We're creating that next opportunity. And thank you for that, for your efforts in pushing that forward, as well as Rick Jennings, as well as the rest of the council and really leaning forward. And as Chet said, we are here and we will stand behind lifting up our entire community, especially also those in the Thomas as well for an aquatic centers. We know it's 104 degrees outside right now, and people want to cool down. And we're going to stand with you on that as well. So thank you for allowing us to have a great opportunity together. Thank you.
Good evening, Pat Fong Kushter, President and CEO of the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce. I too want to say thank you. Thank you all for your leadership and thank you, we stand united today, the business community, our neighborhoods, our civic leaders. And we just want to say thank you. In particular, I want to thank Councilmember Guerra because I know you've been such a strong supporter of the API community on Stockton Boulevard. So with today's budget approval, we have a lot to accomplish, but we're committed and we stand with you. Thank you so much, Mayor, for your leadership. Thank you. We have Keon Morton, Cassandra Jennings, and Rachel Rios.
Keon Morton, Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce. And as part of this coalition and part of the community, we want to say thank you, all of you, to your leadership and where you've gotten us to this point now, mayor, city council, and city staff. We really appreciate the vision and what you're trying to do and push this forward for inclusive economic development and overall economic
all of us to lean into, and your efforts to move the conversation forward to make sure the budget reflects that of all of us. And so, thank you for your efforts. And then to Councilmember Carr in my district, District 8. I think today and what happened with LeVar Burton and what you've advocated for and lifted up in our district, I think we're creating dreams. We're creating that next Reading Rainbow. We're creating that next opportunity, and thank you for that, for your efforts in pushing that forward, as well as Rick Jennings, as well as the rest of the council, and really leaning forward. And as Chet said, we are here and we will stand behind lifting up our entire community, especially also those in the Tomes as well for an aquatic centers. We know it's 104 degrees outside right now and people want to cool down, and we're going to stand with you on that as well. So thank you for allowing us to have a great opportunity together. Thank you.
Good evening. Pat Fong Kushter, President and CEO of the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce. I too want to say thank you. Thank you all for your leadership and thank you, we stand united today, the business community, our neighborhoods, our civic leaders, and we just want to say thank you. In particular, I want to thank Councilmember Guerra, because I know you've been such a strong supporter of the API community on Stockton Boulevard. So with today's budget approval, we have a lot to accomplish, but we're committed and we stand with you. Thank you so much, Mayor, for your leadership. Thank you.
We have Keon Morton, Cassandra Jennings, and Rachel Rios.
Keon Morton, Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce. And as part of this coalition and part of the community, we want to say thank you, all of you, to your leadership and where you've gotten us to this point now, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. We really appreciate the vision and what you're trying to do and push this forward for inclusive economic development and overall economic prosperity for the city. And we really look forward to the Metro Chamber and as well as the rest of the coalition working with city staff and working with the rest of you to really make sure that this comes to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Keon.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Cassandra Jennings, President and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. I too want to thank you. I'm excited and appreciative of certainly the hard work that staff has done to get us here and certainly your leadership and support. All of you, all of my council members, of course, I live in one district and I work in another, and I certainly support all of them, and I work in more than one district, I will say. I'm just reminded as we look at the future, I had this AIA report that was done in 2015, and it just reminds me, it was for a particular neighborhood, but I just want to give you a little snippet of what it is and how so important it is of the action that you're about to take. It says, "At the same time," it talked about the good parts of a community, but then it said, "At the same time, this community is clearly struggling. By almost any measure, its level of social and economic depravity is among the highest in Sacramento. It has some of the highest rates of poverty, unemployment, high school dropout rate, crime rates in Sacramento, and some of the lowest salaries and educational attainment." It goes on to say, "There is clearly some strong community frustration and a sense that the rest of the city doesn't care about their plight." But then it goes on to say, "Yet, even with these challenges, this particular neighborhood's strong bones and many of its residents provide a sense of hope and opportunity, and this neighborhood appears to be on a tipping point. A combination of community commitment, city action, and private investment can revitalize this community." I thank you for making that step to really change these communities one at a time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rachel Rios, then George Rea.
Hi, I'm Rachel Rios, Executive Director of La Familia Counseling Center, and I'd like to introduce our Board Chair.
I'm Nate. My name's Rick Bransma.
I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the council for your thoughtful discussions and commitment to our young people and to the programs of our city. We know that these were some very difficult decisions to make. We hope that this is just the beginning of your commitment to investing in all of our communities to ensure that inclusive economic development really does mean inclusive economic development for all communities. And really want to thank our city council member of whose district I work in and also live in, so he has a big responsibility for, you know, really lifting up La Familia's programs and supporting us throughout the years.
Those words are music to our ears, but we're so gratified that there are actual dollars behind them, and they are going to be invested wisely, and they're going to make a huge difference in our area and to the people we serve. So thank you very much for your commitment.
Thank you.
Next speaker is George Rea, then Jim Hoop, then Mac Worthy.
Thank you all, coalition members, for coming tonight.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm George Rea, resident Midtown native born. I want to thank you for recommending that the LGBT Center be allocated $750,000 to help us relocate. We opened our doors in 86, and in the last few years, we have had tremendous growth. We are now at about 25 staff. By the end of the year, if all of our funded positions are filled, we'll have a staff of 35. But that means we're in an old Victorian that's not ADA compatible, and we have three and four staff person per room, which makes it difficult for us to give our services because we're providing services, HIV testing, health programs, counseling programs. We need a bigger space to provide services to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hoop, then Mac Worthy, then Devin Lavelle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Jim Hoop from Friends of the Sacramento River Parkway. Let me say, let me add my thanks to those you've just heard. I want to thank you for the vote last week as the Budget Nautic Committee to approve the mayor's budget priorities, and in particular, the 2-plus million for furthering the Sacramento River Parkway. I want to thank Councilmember Jennings for your continuing leadership on this. Councilmember Harris, I know you couldn't give us your vote last week, but I expect that in spirit, we have your support for the completion of the Sacramento River Parkway. And I want to thank, and I want to congratulate this council for having the fortitude to take the bold steps that it has taken in a number of votes to get to this point where we are finally going to make progress. Progress that council members over 50 years have been unwilling to take. Thank you so much for that support.
Next speaker is Mac Worthy, then Devin Lavelle, then Caroline Cabias.
A budget. Forty million set aside with no lock on the door. Slash fund. See, legal California's fingerprints all over it. That's reason you have a council member embedded into the largest lobbyist group of people in Northern California. This is how they started off to set aside 11% of taxpayers' money. When Gerald Brown filed a suit, went into Oakland and then filed a suit against Oakland, how many million did he put in his pocket to become governor again? We see the mayor preparing to become governor here, but I tell you, a Mickey in the jar and a Mickey in the jar going to come from Washington DC. From Don Shump, my main man, business. Everybody stood up here tonight was nonprofit. Black folks, you cannot sustain a nonprofit. The city, state, and government is nonprofit, which this is a welfare state. Go to profiting laws, people. You can't do it. I can show you the same nonsense made 40 years ago. You still got the same thing, housing and drugs on the list. Why? Because you didn't step out and say, "We're going to be independent and equal and not equal to nobody." When you eliminate your constitution in a sanctuary city, what do you have to base on? Nothing. When the funds is cut by the federal government, where are the nonprofit going to go? Where's the $40 million going to go? Set aside. A door with no lock on it, where's it go? Show me where. Where's the interest that it's going to draw after the first year? What bank it going to be in? These people don't have the ability because they don't know investments. So wake up, people. The cliff is coming.
Next speaker is Devin Lavelle, then Caroline Cabias.
Evening, Council Mayor. Thanks for your time. My name is Devin Lavelle, Parks Commissioner for Council District 7. We've seen today a wonderful example of how parks can bring a community together around something good and something beautiful, and it was a great afternoon. And I, it's, this budget does a really great job of keeping with the spirit of Measure U and balancing investments today and longer-term needs. And it also invests significantly in parks and recreation opportunities. If we want to build stronger communities, then it's important that they have great parks and great trails, great pools, great community centers at the center of them. And so, I'm grateful for what you have approved last week and are set to approve tonight for Councilman Jennings' fantastic leadership over the years and getting us to this point where we are truly moving forward on the Sacramento River Parkway. And I look forward to a wonderful day when I can ride my bike with my kids along the Sacramento Parkway to a newly expanded fairytale town, and I really, really hope we can do that while they still want to do that with me. And so, thank you for that. Of course, I know this isn't the end. There's a long list of deferred maintenance in our parks that we're going to have to hopefully deal with one of these days. A friend and neighbor just yesterday emailed me about how she tripped at Seymour Park in our neighborhood and scraped up her arm pretty badly. She's okay. I don't think she's going to sue the city, but I do know if this were someone's sidewalk and not a city park, that person would be required to, within, I believe it's 60 or maybe 90 days, I forget, fix that at their own expense. So hopefully, we can do a little bit better and keep ourselves within the standards we set for everybody. But thank you for this. This is a great step forward, and that's it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Caroline Cabias, then Annette DeGlo.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Guerra, council members. I'm Caroline Cabias. I'm here representing the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for supporting our neighborhoods. We're excited to create inclusive economic opportunities in low-income communities particularly, which will afford opportunities for job training and development of business initiatives at a minimum. Mayor, thank you when you came out in the beginning of the Measure U discussions. You came out and made a commitment to be a leader in representing communities of color, impoverished communities, communities that needed job opportunities, business development opportunities. You committed to us then that you would take a leadership role in this, and you've done that. And somehow, the council has come together to make an entire package that should benefit all of our communities. So we thank you for that. We look forward to working with the council on going forward, and we're very excited for the new prospects. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
Next speaker is Annette DeGlo, then Carlos Marquez, then Ben Hudson.
Annette here.
I see Annette. Carlos Marquez. Carlos, okay.
He's coming, Ben.
Following Carlos is Ben Hudson, then David Heitztman is our final speaker.
Carlos Marquez, Board President for the Sacramento LGBT Community Center. Thank you so much for your ongoing support of the agency. We're incredibly energized by the next phase of growth for the organization, which includes purchasing our first building, and it's only possible because of your leadership. And I want to especially thank Councilmember Hanson and Mayor Steinberg for your ongoing support. We want to continue to be responsive to the needs of our diverse community, which will include growing our youth drop-in center, making sure that we can continue to provide respite services to folks who are experiencing mental health issues so that we can deescalate and keep them out of the emergency room. We're excited about growing our continuum of housing services for the growing population of LGBTQ youth who are housing insecure or homeless. And of course, we're thrilled about strengthening our training institute as well, which will allow us to continue to transform every system that our community touches, whether that be healthcare, education, or even law enforcement. And so, we just thank you so much for your confidence.
Thank you, Carlos.
Ben Hudson, then David Heitztman.
Hi, my name is Ben Hudson. I use he and him pronouns. I'm the co-founder and executive director at Gender Health Center. I believe that many of you, other than Steve Hanson, don't know who we are, although we are in Steve's district and you have not been to Gender Health Center after the phone call where you asked me to endorse you, I think about seven years ago, where you were coming here. So Gender Health Center provides services to our community. We do, we had about 1,600 people come through our respite. We've trained about 150 medical students who have come through in transgender healthcare. And Mayor Steinberg, we're also a part of the California Reducing Disparities Project, which is money from MHSA, right, state-funded money. So this is allowing us five years of an opportunity to be able to measure, right, the programming that we provide in mental health. We have seen over 15,000 folks in mental health services in the last nine years. We provided 4,000 individual mental health services last year, and that's great to hear about it. Unfortunately, City Council has pitted against each other, these two organizations, Gender Health Center and LGBT Center, because you probably didn't know that there was another organization in this town providing these types of services. And that lands at the feet of Mr. Hanson, as he could have brought that information to you. And so, I'm very excited that LGBT Center is being, that any money is going towards LGBT work in this community. But I'm concerned that you didn't know that we also don't have an elevator, that there are people who are unable to come and get services from us, that we have a 100-person waiting list for our mental health services. Sometimes people are waiting three to six months to come and get our medical services. And every director before, the six EDs that have been here before David Heitztman, have come to me to say, "Would you like to co-locate?" And at that time, no money was ever on the table. But when there is money on the table, no one ever came to ask me that. So what are my 18 employees going to do and how are we going to show growth? And we serve different populations.
Thank you. Our final speaker on this item is David Heitztman.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers and Vice Mayor Guerra. I really appreciate your support of the center, not only in the housing programs that you have supported us so far, but also in this future relocation project that we're working on. I appreciate that there is another LGBT organization in town and is providing services to our community. The, I think it's emblematic of the deep need in our community and that the capacity for to serve that need is not nearly where it needs to be. And our staff, yes, is spilling out into the hallways, but also our clients are spilling out into the hallways for support groups, for community meetings, for a variety of different activities and services. Our drop-in center, of course, is seeing far more clients than we can, than is appropriate for the space that we are using. The roof leaks and a variety of, and there are a variety of physical limitations to the space, including its lack of ADA access to all floors. And this new facility that we have envisioned would be a place where we could work with community partners and would be a place where we can bring folks together and serve our communities' current and future needs. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, David.
More speakers.
All right, let's, thank you very much for the public testimony, not only this week, but for the many weeks. It's been very, very impactful. And I'll close with some thanks in a few moments and a few comments, but let me turn it over to the members. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be brief here because we've talked about this quite a bit. So, three things I want to say. Number one, Ms. Ashby and I have been through a lot of these, and speaking for myself, this is the most exciting budget that I've been able to take part in since I've been on the council. We have always, we were either making cuts, or we were nibbling around the edges where we had a couple hundred thousand dollars here or there to try to make a difference in this community. Tonight, we're doing something that I do think is a pivot point for this community and for the City of Sacramento as we move forward, to really make real investments in the communities that need the most. And so, I'm very excited about moving forward on this. We have never had this level of community engagement in the budget. It's not always been fun, but I think it's been incredibly important. And I think the coalition between a number of activists, the business community, the nonprofit community is something that we really need to sustain, to hold us accountable, to hold the city accountable, to move us all forward together. So I want to thank all those who came out to support this and have been working on this for quite a while. I want to ask, if I can, for the City Manager. We have two committees. The Investment Committee was announced this, or last week, and then we have our Community Advisory Committee, which I believe has its third meeting tomorrow night. I think we're a little bit hazy on the process for putting projects into the pipeline, for seeing how we, what kind of are the guiding principles of those two groups. So, Mr. City Manager, if we could come back, hopefully, either at our next meeting or following that, because I don't want us to get too far down the line with both of those committees where we don't have a good handle on their charge, on their responsibilities, and on the process that they're going to use. I see Mr. Jasso here. So I know we're not quite there yet, and there's a lot of work to do, and that this is something different from the city, from how the city's operated for a long time. So I would make that request. And Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to make the motion on this. Since it's your budget, I'm happy to turn that over to you, if you'd like to do it.
Well, that would be, that would be very nice. Thank you.
Go for it.
Do I do it now?
Sure. Because I want to second it.
When I open and close the hearing, I want to move the staff recommendation with the change that as Holm referred to earlier, namely, the Exhibit 1, I believe it is, the letter of...
Your budget letter?
The budget memo, including the $40 million, intent to set aside $40 million here for five years, and the bottoming strategy embedded within that. As added to the resolution, I would like to move the 2019-20 budget. Thank you.
With that, I'll second it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Chenier. Vice Mayor Guerra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, keep my comments short. I think this has been, you know, a robust discussion on our budget. And starting off with a, the question again, about how are we, how are we planning for the future? And I think this budget is the seed for that future again. We're doing, I think, significant steps in looking at community... We're, we're doing, I think, significant steps in looking at communities like Franklin Boulevard, like Stockton Boulevard, like Folsom Boulevard, and even Northgate Boulevard, by making sure that we're also empowering our economic development staff to be able to assist in addressing those areas, and in making sure that we can start to make the changes in areas that haven't seen any significant growth. Even in a climate as today, where the market is doing good and things are going well, we still don't see those communities benefiting. I think this budget also recognizes a huge amount of talent. I mean, today, we, we recognized, at the beginning of this hearing, two great local artists. And, and the fact that we're putting money behind the arts and trying to support that effort and making sure that we're, we're enhancing our own local talent, that's critical. And, and the, and helping, you know, nurture that human part of our, our city. I also want to thank the city manager for making sure that we included the funding to address the issue of human trafficking, and, and, or, and working with organizations like Community Against Sexual Harm. Many of those communities are being, are, are in great need, and, and this resource here will only help us support the victims. That's a critical part of this budget, I think, also a minor one, but, but a critical one that, that I want to make sure is not overlooked. I, I want to make sure that the folks that they, we're here, from La Familia, who are here in support of the budget today, that I think their idea of creating a workforce center is a great idea, and that we continue to empower that. And I know I'll be working with Councilmember Shanier to make sure that a corridor like Franklin Boulevard has that ability. And I don't want to lose sight that the fact that this budget has the support for our critical core services as well, maintaining our parks, looking at illegal dumping, public safety, all of the great needs that we need to, our infrastructure department, utilities, even those issues that sometimes don't get as much attention, but then improve the quality of life of our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting bold ideas, and thank you, Councilmember Hanson, for helping us land this plane. I think this is a great budget and glad to support it.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you. So, it's an easy budget to vote yes for, based on what's in there. I'm going to vote yes on this budget because I care about Fairy Tale Town, and I care about the LGBT Center, and I care about the Summer Night Lights programs in Meadowview and Del Paso, and the bike path in District Seven, and Stockton Boulevard, and I care deeply about the childcare coordinator that I too advocated for, and all the other things that are in here. And I think the city manager did a great job of putting together a strong budget for core city services that needed to be handled, with additional park staffing and all the things that are in there. And I know our budget team worked tirelessly, Dawn, your crew, Jason, everybody, you guys did a phenomenal job on this budget and worked really hard to corral, you know, nine members' input and try to bring something forward. And Councilmember Hanson, you did a, really, a good job of helping us land on our feet here, and taking something and turning it into something that I think we can pretty much all support. I'm not upset at all with anything that's in this budget. I, I think it includes lots of great priorities. I'm upset with what's not in the budget, District One and District Three. And we made that clear last time, and I did not ask my community to come down today, because I think you got the point, you heard from them, lots of them, that inclusive economic development should include every, we're not eight cities, we're one city. And when you leave out Natomas, and north and south, and Gardenland, and Northgate, and all of East Sac, and River Park, and two full council districts out of the eight, then it's not a full budget for the full city. And that's frustrating for me, but not enough for me to vote no, because I think the things that are in here are really important, too. So I'm going to vote yes, and I'm going to hope that you all will support Councilmember Harris's items when they come forward. I hope, in the next 30 days, we see a proposal that includes funding for Northgate and South Natomas, and I look forward to voting for that. And I hope you all will be back here to advocate for those communities, too. And if we don't see Northgate as a community that needs help, I, I'm not sure that we're paying close enough attention, because that is a community that has been left behind many, many times over and could really use some help. And I look forward to seeing the aquatic facility funding come back to this council soon, too, and hearing from my colleagues on their stated support. I hope that we can move that project forward as well. I think it's important for the city, and I look forward to that conversation. And I want to thank the community members today, who also said that they support Districts One and Three, and the aquatic facility and community center in District One in particular. I appreciate you. I appreciate that while you're here advocating for your community, you see other ones that need to be included, too. So thank you very much for that. I look forward to it. I didn't enjoy this process. Councilmember Shanier, yes, I think this is our ninth budget. It would be my favorite if I were included, but I am not. Hopefully, before the end of the summer, Jeff and I, and our council districts, and the 20% of the city that we represent, will be as happy as the rest. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd just first like to start where everybody else started, in thanking you, Dawn, and your staff. I think this is as close to gymnastics as we can ask of any one of our teams, and you guys have done admirable work in rebuilding the budget and responding to our questions and getting us information. And I know that we asked you to work a lot of late nights and weekends, and I'm really grateful that we have you on our team, you and your whole staff. Councilmember Ashby, I, I rarely hear my own words come back to me through you, but you're, we're not eight cities, we're one city. I said that last week, and I meant it, because I was so passionate about helping to make sure that no part of the city gets left behind. And I want to thank each of you as colleagues, because this process was different, but it was different for a lot of reasons. And the biggest one was that the mayor was so insistent that we go out with a one-cent Measure U. And there's no denying that we'd be in a very different place if we just simply renewed the existing half-cent. And hearing the members of the community who came up to talk about what this means, I know we have aspirations. We have so much work to do, so much to catch up on, so many communities that need dramatic investment and to move quickly, but to see the coalition that came up to talk about what this does mean, while it's not everything, it's something, I think, is very touching, not only because we care so much about what we do, but we care so much about how it affects the people in the various communities. And I know all of you who spoke, and you do so much every day, all day, and you give everything you have to help people. And so for you to be grateful for where we are, I think says a lot about this budget. Dear colleagues, this has been a hard but thoughtful process, and I know each one of you has put a tremendous amount of heart and thought into how we build this budget. And while it doesn't have everything I want, or everything any of you want, I think it does do things that are important. And even though I know I, I disappointed my friend next to me, Mr. Harris, last week by not accepting his friendly amendment, I do believe that, like Councilmember Ashby said, whether it's Northgate or South Natomas, or the Aquatic Center, which I'm hearing very positive news about how it's coming in with the bids, I know that we will work together to fulfill those aspirations as well. And I, I don't say that out of some kind of political, you know, desire to make you feel better. I actually just want to help you, and, and I know we all do. And so I just wanted to address, lastly, Mr. Hudson's comments, because I think we have an opportunity, like we've had, not only with the African-American community, or the Latino community, or with the API community, but to continue to provide open and inclusive support to the LGBTQ community and their efforts. And Ben, I, I hope to see you this week at the General Health Center. I want to set up a meeting. And I do think that this process outlined in the budget provides more than, than people understand. There are going to be new programs, new grants, both for services but also for capital. And I'd love to work with you to, to help your aspirations for your organization be fulfilled as well. And I think that's the promise of the city of Sacramento, to be the indomitable city. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm very proud that we're here, and I'm grateful for your leadership. And Howard, I would be remiss to not thank you as the lead gymnast in getting us through this, and being very nimble, but also diplomatic is the wrong word, but my predecessor up here, Rong Fong, called you Howard Chan, the perfect man. And I think that your hard work, your open-mindedness, and your open-heartedness has allowed us to come together in a budget that really does speak on behalf of the city. So thank you, Howard.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you know, LeVar Burton was here earlier, and of course, he played Geordi La Forge on Star Trek. And I want to start out with some of his words. "I'm not looking for a warp core breach here, Captain." Now, anybody who was here last week for the Budget Audit Committee realized that I kind of went off a little bit. There's an awful lot of good in this budget, as Councilmember Ashby has articulated. There's an awful lot of good, and in fact, even in the mayor's budget priorities, there's an awful lot of good. But as I articulated last week, if we're going to talk about equity and inclusivity, it has to be the whole city. It can't be minus one-fifth of the city. I still have a big problem with this, and I feel that my council colleagues, in adopting those priorities, said that this council's priorities exclude one-fifth of the city. You know, everybody who testified today is getting something from this budget. I get it. It's easy to praise a budget where you're getting a project or an investment in your community, and it helps uplift you. But what do you say to the people of Northgate, or Gardenland, or River Gardens, who have been waiting in line with all the other underserved communities in this city, and who are not acknowledged in a budget document like this? For me, it's tremendously problematic. The mayor made a promise, I felt it was a promise, that he would work with me in the next 30 days to come up with some kind of plan to get to more parity in terms of spending. Now, he also mentioned that this is the beginning of the process, not the end. I appreciate that. There is more money to allocate, there are more projects to fund. All of this is good news for the city. There's no doubt about it. But I do not like sending a negative message to my district, or Councilwoman Ashby's district, that they are not included in a budget deliberation. It's just not right. And then, and if you came to budget audit, there was tremendous testimony for and against adopting the, the budget priorities. Clearly, the people who testified for were getting something, and the people who testified against weren't. So this is something I feel we need to rectify. Mr. Mayor, I look forward to working with you to rectify this, this, what I consider an oversight. But here's, here's the point I want to get to. You know, I, I was the only dissenting vote last week, and I'm fine with that. You know, I stand my ground and, and say my truth. And if I lose a vote, it's, it's no hard feelings. We are a council of nine, right? There's a lot of good brain power up here, a lot of differing opinions, a lot of ways to approach every single problem, a lot of ideas about how to fund projects. And so I lost that vote. That's, that's fine with me, but there is a point to be made here. We need a better process to determine how we allocate resources in this city. We don't have any policy that guides us in these decisions. Councilmember Carr has pointed this out numerous times at this diet. And Larry, I really look forward to working with you, and Councilmember Jennings, and other members who have expressed an interest on the Policy Governance Committee, to do exactly that, to give us a framework, so that in the future, when we adopt a budget, it is not a food fight, or people scrapping for projects in their districts. We are one city, and if you want to lift this city, you have to lift it equally and at the same time. You can't leave people behind. It's very important that we send the right message to the Measure U committees. To Councilmember Shanier's point, they have no rudder either. They have no guidelines by which to sort out and evaluate and prioritize projects to bring them back to the city council, so that we can deliberate on their merits. We have to fix this. And if one good thing comes out of this budget, and actually, many good things will come out of it, I hope that that's it, that we create a process so the Measure U committees can be successful, and that the council, when we next adopt a budget, do not go through this process, because I have found it tremendously divisive. I, I think we can recover from it, but we just have to put our thinking caps on and get there. Part of that is data, and the management partners process, when they come back with their report, I think will be tremendously illustrative to give us data and a framework for fiscal projection, and will add to that process and really help guide us through bonding if we should go that route. And, you know, to, to that extent, I would ask that we add a little direction to this budget process, which is about the safeguards that Councilmember Hanson put in, the 6% cap of general fund going to debt service, but also the stress test. You know, we actually don't have a process for a stress test either. So rather than just having an analysis by the Treasury Department, I would ask that we get an independent financial institution to add to the stress test process. And in fact, our city auditor is already looking into it. So that would be my direction to the, to the city manager. I also have to say that the manager and the finance department have been really the stars of the show. Daniel, and Don, and Laney, and all the crew, you know, and the finance department, we've worked you more than overtime, believe me, I'm keenly aware of it. You've been burning about 80 or 90 hours a week, formulating a budget, reformulating a budget, taking direction, doing it again, and again, and again. And I really laud your work. I think that you have been tremendous and steadfast, and done your very utmost best to give us the numbers that we need to make decisions with. And so, just a, a real big thank you for that. You know, I, I could do a protest vote tonight, I could be, again, the lone dissent, but I don't think it would move the city forward. We, we, we've worked hard, all of us. It's been a real stress test for us to go through this budget process, certainly has been for me. I want this to move forward, I want our city to move forward. So I will vote in favor of this budget, because as Councilmember Ashby said, there's a lot of good, but there is a lot left out. I'm not satisfied. I'm not happy. In fact, I'm still angry, but I see light at the end of the tunnel. There is a path forward if we keep our thinking hats on, and if we work towards, moving towards policy direction that gives a little sanity to this process. The last thing I want to say is this, the mayor's budget memo process is not codified in this city. It was an informal handshake done with Kevin Johnson to help us through a period of real stress when we had no money. But the, the story has changed now, and largely because of the mayor's zeal to pass Measure U. So now we have resources, and so, so much more do we need a defined process to manage this successfully. I think that the time for the, the mayor's budget memo is over, and I would see that moving forward, I hope this council will come to a consensus as we build policy, and we have these guiding tenets with which to make these decisions, that we can act as a council and not create an inequity like I feel that we created this time in this budget. All that being said, you know, I'd like to congratulate my colleagues on going through the process, getting to the finish line. And Mayor, I look forward to working with you.
Me, too. Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Carr.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to Councilmember Harris. I appreciate your volunteering to work and try to help develop a process, a policy that will guide us through this. From my seat, one of the things that really hurts us as a council is that we're so parochial. We think about our districts. And I would remind everyone, in 2020, there's going to be a redistricting, and you may not be in the same district that you're in now, if you're in a district that, oh, they could, so I think we need to move away from that kind of focus, and move closer to a focus where we're looking at a standard for all the city. And instead of fighting over dollars for our district, we fight over how high the standard should be for any one function, and those then become the council priorities for that year. We say we want to have a higher standard for fire protection. We say we want to have a higher standard for fire protection, or a higher standard for roads, or a higher standard for recreational activities, the number of our children that are exposed and participating in after-school programs or summer programs. When we start fighting about the standards, which is the real conversation that we should have, then we're out of the district discussion, and all the council members are trying to push in the same direction. As well as another benefit, we totally align the city, from the city council all the way down to the hourly workers, everyone will know what we're trying to do. And everyone will be in alignment, and then we will become an efficient operating city. So, I look forward to working with you on it.
Thank you, Man. Thank you, Councilmember Carr, and thank you to my colleagues. Last word here before we vote. Tempted, as I am, to relitigate, tempted as I am to relitigate the argument that so much of what I put in this now famous budget memo benefited every district of the city, including Districts 1 and 3, whether it's the pop-ups, the youth engagement, summer programming, the kindergarten to college savings program, the free transit for youth, the child commander, the zoo relocation, arts, any creative economy, and I'm tempted as I am, tempted as I am, to argue again about the aquatic center, which I favor being a request that is seven times more than any of the requests made by any of my colleagues. Tempted as I am to argue with Councilmember Harris about the propriety, and in fact, the importance of the mayor of this city actually taking the lead and putting forward his view and vision of, of the city's priorities, I choose not to make that argument tonight.[721.01][721.01](Laughter).
Oh, go ahead.[724.13][724.13](Laughter).
Instead, I want to thank the city staff, led by the city manager, and the finance staff led by Don Holm, outstanding job under a very stressful set of circumstances. And I want to thank my colleagues on the city council here for engaging in putting forward your vision and your view of what is best for our city. I want to especially thank Councilmember Hanson, Steve, for stepping forward at a crucial time and a role, and, and helping me see through this vision. And I want to thank the community. I think when the last chapter of this debate is written, what people will say is not only did we begin an investment strategy in Sacramento's neighborhoods, especially our disadvantaged neighborhoods, but that we brought forward a new and bold political coalition. A group of advocates who in many respects, in many walks, had not necessarily worked together, whether it be the business community, the social equity community, the community-based organizations, and now you have made the beginning of a formidable force. And I hope you don't rest on your laurels, or let that power fritter away after this debate, and I know you won't. Pastor Simmons summed it up for me in his testimony a few moments ago. My city sees me. My city sees me. How profound, how simple and how profound. Because if we're, to be honest with ourselves, we would acknowledge that over the course of many decades, and for a variety of reasons, not malicious, mostly benign, we've accepted high rates of poverty and blight, and, and living conditions, and lack of opportunity for too many of our residents in Sacramento. In some ways, this is a historic budget, because it represents a shift in direction around what defines the core obligations of our city. And core obligation number one always is public safety, always. But that's not all we do, nor all we should do. This is a moment to celebrate, but it is not a moment to rest, because all of our dreams, all of our ambitions, all of our obligations to see and act on behalf of all of our people in our city, in our great city, depends on maintaining this $40 million a year commitment for the next four years. Talk about a food fight. We don't maintain that commitment. What do we choose? Do we choose an aquatic center over the Martin Luther King Library? Do we choose the Norseak Library over La Familia? Do we choose upping that $2.3 million investment in the arts to $5 million against youth We shouldn't have to make those choices, and the direction that we are setting here tonight, and that we have set together over the last several months, if we stay with it, and if we commit to it, means that we will be able to do all of that, and so much more. So, I'm proud of our community. Hey, if this were easy, if this were easy, it would have been done a long time ago, and without a little fight and a little struggle, and a good old debate in this, in this messy democracy. If, if, if there wasn't all of that, we wouldn't be celebrating as much as we're going to celebrate tonight, and in the days, the months, and the years ahead. This is a worthy fight, because it's on behalf of our people, all of our people, but especially those who deserve a great chance at life, just like every other person. Doesn't matter what community you live in, you're darn right, we're not a city of eight districts, we're one city. And that means we stand for and with all of our people. I urge you and I vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.[1037.04][1037.04](Applause). That's a wrap.[1040.13][1040.13](Applause). If you want to sign up to speak, then you're going to have to wait for a few minutes, okay? Thank you.[1056.83][1056.83](Applause). Thank you. Excuse me. Please file out of the chambers quietly and treat each other with respect. Thank you. Yeah, Mackenzie, leave quietly.[1086.28][1086.28](Laughter). Item 31, please. Who's presenting on item 31?
Good evening, Mayor Seinberg, and councilmembers. Ceni Mokassini with the Finance Department. The idea before is a public hearing to approve the annual reports and levy assessments for fiscal year 2020 for each of the following business improvement areas, also known as BIAs. Currently, within the city of Sacramento, we have six BIAs. Del Paso Boulevard BIA, Downtown Plaza BIA.
I'm sorry.
Point of order, I can't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If you can wait just a minute. Why don't we start? Yes, I'm sorry. Let's, let's, let's make sure that we have some quiet in the chambers, okay? Hold on a second. If, people in the chambers, we need you to please sit down, if you would. If you're, if you're leaving, that's okay too, but if you could please sit down, we'd appreciate it. And maybe we can get the door back there, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Unless there's something to be read into the record, different than the staff report, I would open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Very good. Is there public testimony on the item? There is not. Okay, any council comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for waiting around.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. I'm Tyrone Roderick Williams, Director of Development at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and Director of the Sacramento Promise Zone. I'm here to fulfill an obligation that we have on an annual basis to come before the city council and to give an update. Tonight, I'm also fulfilling an obligation of the P3 program to come on an annual basis and give an update. Since 2015, the Sacramento Promise Zone has provided over $150 million into the Sacramento community. The Sacramento Promise Zone is highlighted in the yellow area, and includes parts of our community, from the north, down through the central part, into the southern, down to the avenue. This is a federal designation that we competed for and received. We are one of 16 cities in the country to have the federal designation. The purpose of the designation is to assist federal agencies in operating outside their silos, and providing funding, targeting promise zones, as well as technical assistance. The definition of the promise zone was directed by guidelines from HUD, and this is the current data on the promise zone residents, life expectancy, and reading levels. There are a number of accomplishments. We will not go through them all tonight. I understand for the sake of time, but we have worked across education, focusing on third-grade reading levels, STEM, and high school graduation supported through college. We are part of the National Coalition of Promise Zones that advocates nationally for federal funding for promise zones, as well as legislation. We're part of the California Affinity Group, which meets on a regular basis online, and talks with the Department of Education about activities in Sacramento. We are leading efforts and discussions and activities in partnership with the city regarding opportunity zones. We are providing throughout the promise zone health fairs that result in healthy diet and access to health care. We have our promise zone nurse community corp that, at this point, has 60 nurses that have provided over 4,000 hours of community service throughout the promise zone. We partnered with Sac State in identifying a location for their downtown campus located in the promise zone. We partnered with the National Endowment for the Arts and the Crocker Arts Museum in the block-by-block activities that are throughout the promise zone. We've also partnered with financial institutions, the first of its kind in the country, where over 11 banks come together on a regular basis to talk about funding opportunities to support organizations in the promise zone. This is an economic development opportunity. To date, over $450,000 has been contributed to supporting our activities that are geared to our P-bids and small businesses. We're supporting the work of SAC to Zero and Envoy Car Share. There are over 70 electric vehicles currently placed in the promise zone and supported in communities outside of the promise zone. Part of our effort is to go after state and national funding to attract into the area. We were awarded the $23 million Integrated Multimodal Place-Based Living Project from the Strategic Growth Council. We're also one of the agency's housing authorities that supports the Jobs Plus, that provides job training and job placement in our public housing. We partnered with the Sac City Unified School District on a number of activities that included Y Plan in partnership with Berkeley. We established our faith-based initiative, working with congregations and faith organizations throughout the city to support activities in the promise zone. In addition to economic development, funding opportunities, we provided support to the Mack Road Partnership Business Walk, and we have a number of other entities that also engage in cross-sector collaborations, such as Build Black Legacy, and our opportunities to expand the jump bikes in the promise zone. One of the greatest highlights that you have before you in your handout, and I won't go into all of it today, is our efforts regarding our SEAC camp, the Summer Engineering Experience for Kids. It's the largest camp in the city that focuses on 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders. I want to acknowledge the support, not only of the city through the Rails grant, but also Councilmember Carr and his support of this effort, but also Councilmember Hanson in his support of activities supporting STEM as well. We are the only housing authority in the country that is involved in a national pilot targeting youth who are at risk of becoming homeless, homeless, aging out of foster care, or on probation. It's called P3, Performance Partnership Pilots for Disconnected Youth. It's a three-year program. We received a $280,000 grant through the Department of Education, serving 100 at-risk youth ages 18 to 24. It is a pilot program that focuses on housing, education, job training, and placement. Currently, we've issued 72 vouchers, housed 38 young adults, and in the, and are processing 15 additional applications at this point. We've also established a partnership with Kasumnus River College to support their efforts in providing housing to students attending their college. Last month, we received from the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment officials, an award, partnership innovation for our work. This program is a model of the country of how our efforts to address homeless, disconnected youth is being reviewed all over the country. That concludes my report, but I have to make one adjustment to our number. I initially said that we had $40 million in four years. That's an average of $41 million per year that the Sacramento Promise Zone has brought to this city without any funding from city or county agencies, with the exception of $50,000 from the Rails grant. Tonight, we have to adjust that, that number, because we've been informed by the Strategic Growth Council that the Twin Rivers redevelopment project has been awarded $18 million toward the construction of housing for the Twin Rivers project. So, that brings our total, in four years, to over $160 million that the Sacramento Promise Zone and our numerous partners have been able to work together in the largest successful cross-sector collaboration in this region. And we are happy to be here to tell you the good news.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I just want to question, didn't you get another, didn't the promise zone get another big grant in the rail yards today, too?
The?
$18 million?
Yes. So, that goes up even higher.
Yeah. So, you're positive about 30 so far today. What are you going to do tomorrow?[1687.33][1687.33](Laughter).
I'm going to go back and tell my staff, and how much we appreciate their tireless efforts to, to do what we do on behalf of all of our partners.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate that. Congratulations to all the great work, and congratulations to District 3 on that success. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, thank you. Tyrone Lachelle, I'm proud of you. You know, you just got a real squeaker right here. It was nip and tuck these last two weeks, and I know that it's been, you know, a bit of angst, but pulling the Twin Rivers project out and seeing a path forward, I'll say this about you all, you're very persistent. You hang in there, and it's much appreciated, because it would have been quite dramatic if, if we had lost this grant. So, wonderful news, and actually, the, the news for the rail yard is equally exciting, because that is going to go towards housing as well, and maybe some transportation component, but mostly housing, all of which we desperately need. So, great job.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you and the agency. I remember when you came to me to ask if you should apply, and I was like, why wouldn't we apply? We got to go do it. And I was like, what does it mean? But I think it's, like a lot of federal programs, doesn't always bring their money immediately, but has brought some, but what it's done is bring a focus to our work. And just like the budget conversation earlier, we have to focus on making some real change in difficult areas. And the grant today, after trying several times to get the AHSC money, I think is a big sign that we are making progress. And I know, I was at a business over the weekend where I know some of the employees there. there came through Jobs Plus, and every time I see those employees, I'm really proud of what the agency does because they're happy, and I talk to them, and they've been working there for a while, and their lives changed because of this program. And it is not every day you walk in a place and you know the story of the people working there, but I do know their story, and I think you are part of their story, and this program definitely is part of their story. So as we work to improve Marina Vista and Alder Grove, just like you're doing at Twin Rivers, I carry that with me, that we will continue to try to lift up that community, which is in my district, through these types of programs and efforts.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. This is a receiving file. Thank you very much for your work. We do have one speaker sign up to speak.
Mack Elworthy would like to speak on this item.
People believe me, I raised four daughters in this town. I got a daughter, Jessica, her master's from Duke. How did I do it? I didn't pay no program. This is only an undercover welfare promise zone, that's all this is. Black folks, you don't know who or what is your babies being told in these areas. There have never been one time a meeting for black people to say how much seed money you would have to put up to have 10 units. Why? Because the person that's called the shots did a league of California cities, and I told you, don't call no shots, but could have the respect of her own kind. Yes, a lot of us get on cloud nine. Just like the young man here by Drummer, I know that family. I know that family well. I know who got killed in that family by a police car running and killed her mother. We got to get away from socialism and get to economics. Black people, this is your time, but you refuse to back a man that got a master plan in front of you, and you'll take garbage. You'll take garbage. I showed you this trip 30 years ago, the same thing. Why is it still here? Because where did their money go? The money they talking about in grants, where did their money go? You could be a whole deposit heights in that kind of money. Where did it go? Through studies and political, that's where it went. Not one black person stayed here to say a word because they satisfied, they dropped crumbs. I'm not a grasshopper. I don't go out and come back. I'm going to stay the same, and I'm going to stay the same right here, and everything I can pump to dump from, I'm studying that promise zone.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm studying that promise zone.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy, for your comments tonight.
And I'm going to speak on those things, too, when it come to time.
Okay, so this is a receiving file, since there are no other members that signed up to speak, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. 190 now. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Item 33 is Housing Authority Riverview Plaza Asset Repositioning Update.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Latena Jones, Assistant Director, Public Housing for SHRA. Today, I will be providing you with very general information regarding guarding one of our properties at 600 I Street, also known as Riverview Plaza. We seek to reposition this property to meet both our financial and fiduciary obligations to our residents, to provide them with affordable, decent, safe, and sanitary housing. This is part one of a two-step process. Tonight, we will essentially lay the groundwork for the need that we have, and then the second step will be an actual recommendation in terms of steps to reposition the property. This property was originally developed in 1988. The residential portion is owned by Riverview Plaza Associates, a California limited partnership composed of the City of Sacramento Housing Authority and Sacramento Housing Development Corporation. As a 16-story mixed-use building, Riverview Plaza has both commercial and residential tenants. Currently, the commercial tenants in the building include Phoenix School, Downtown Hair Design, and Billy's Market. The residential tenants reside in 123 one-bedroom units. The residents are all either seniors, 62 years of age or older, or disabled, as defined by HUD. Occupancy stays consistent between 99 and 100 percent with very little turnover. The rental structure of Riverview Plaza is broken up into three main tiers, each having minor differences in maximum allowable rents and incomes. For Tier 1, rents are limited to 25 percent of a resident's monthly income. For Tiers 2 and 3, rents are reviewed annually for compliance with tax credit requirements and tenant affordability. Currently, the only subsidy tied to these units are tenant-based housing choice vouchers, of which we have approximately 36. The compliance period for all the tiers are ending by December 2019, except for the downtown housing set-aside units. These units will continue to be restricted until 2063. Two major financial concerns have brought us to the point of needing to reposition this site. One, the property is encumbered by Cal HFA loan that was part of the initial financing for the building in 1988. And two, the property has had a lack of net operating income. To the first point, the current debt of that loan is $1.7 million, which is comprised of a principal balance in the amount of $932,743, and accrued interest in the amount of The loan was initially due in 2016, but Cal HFA granted the partnership and extension until December 31, 2019. To the second point, rent increases are limited to no more than 2.5 percent per year as part of the regulatory agreements for the property. Rents have not been able to keep pace with the needs for repairs and debt repayment. During the economic downturn of 2008 to 2009, rents were reduced in order to sustain occupancy of the building. They were at one point reduced to $450 per month. With high sustained occupancy and a limit to increasing rents, operating revenue has been stifled below the projected rents for the property. The building has been rehabilitated since its original development date. In 2008, the building envelope was rehabbed to address water intrusion concerns in the building. This was a major undertaking at a cost of over $5 million. Over the years, the needs of the building have outpaced the ability of the operating budget and reserves to address them. Currently, items of primary concern at the site are air conditioning units, drainage, the elevators, floors, and the fire systems. Due to the aforementioned issues, we've hired CSG advisors to assess this property along with our public housing properties as we look for long-term financial stability and the preservation of our housing assets. A multitude of options have been reviewed by staff: tax credits, project-based vouchers, and mixed-income options. As staff continues to work with CSG, we will only consider options that ensure that housing at Riverview remains safe, sanitary, and affordable. Staff is at the initial stage of exploring the best option to reposition Riverview Plaza. We need to acquire additional information on the property and work with the residents to obtain their desires and input for the site. We will start off by completing a physical needs assessment. This assessment will give us a detailed plan of the essential needs at the property in addition to projected costs associated with those needs. We believe that full resident participation is important. We will therefore incorporate suggestions by residents on improvements they would like to see in their building. This will take place over several meetings to assure that residents' voices are fully weaved into the fabric of the final outcome at the site. The ultimate goal will be a transparent and inclusive process. We will also meet with Cal HFA to provide updates on the efforts to repay the loan at the property. Our desire is to get another extension for at least a year while we execute our plan to refinance the property debt. The final plan to repay Cal HFA debt and reposition the site will be brought back to this body for your consideration. Staff will work closely with CSG financiers to assure that we have a feasible plan that will maximize the options to fully address the needs at the site. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to address your questions.
Great, thank you for your comments. We have no one signed up to speak. I'll move over to Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This project is in my district, and indeed, I'm very familiar with it, as LaChelle, Tyrone, and others know. The building is in need of rehabilitation. It hasn't been touched in a long time, but I guess as you consider the next steps and what you bring back to us, the things I'm looking at are, it's not clear that we're going to maintain in the proposal the affordability of all 124 units, and maybe I didn't understand correctly, but whatever you bring back to us, I hope maintains the affordability of all 124 units. And I figured that's there, but I didn't see it explicitly, and so I just wanted to say that that is very important. These seniors and disabled folks who live there, we actually, before the mayor was sworn in, we did the great SAC give-back there and have continued to provide additional outreach to them, and they want renovations. They want whether it's the carpeting replaced or the elevators to be all functional. It's not as much to ask as it may seem to them, but it is really important to us that we continue to preserve this housing stock, so thank you for all of the hard work the agency and its staff have been doing.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Hanson. This is a receiving file, and if there are no other council members signed up to speak, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation today and all your work. Madam Clerk, we're on council comments and ideas. Any members signed up to speak? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm afraid this is going to take a little bit of time. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 12, there's a General Plan Update Community Meeting at Natomas High School at 5:30 PM. This Friday, Stanford Settlement is hosting their 27th Annual Senior Health and Information Fair. Stanford Settlement is a real jewel in the community in the North Gate area, providing myriad services and benefits to the community. They're one of the unsung and often unrecognized heroes of our community. Food Truck Mania returns this Friday, June 14, at Glen Hall Park from 5 to 9 PM. Also on Friday, we are groundbreaking for the McKinley Water Vault Project. After two years of working towards this goal, we're finally there. And Pops in the Park returns this Saturday. Concert number three out of five happens June 15 with Idea Team at East Portal Park. The beer garden and food vendors will be open at 5 PM. The band starts playing at 6 and ends at 9 PM. Mr. Assistant City Manager, I'd like to make a request. I won't be here for the next lawn ledge meeting, so I'd like to get something on the log. I would like to develop a policy for repurposing the tree trunks that are developed when we do urban tree care operations. Right now, we divert an awful lot of carbon to the landfill, and these trees can actually provide valuable lumber, and so, working with the Tree Foundation, I would like to work with staff, I've got an awful lot of information so that we can divert this wood from the waste stream.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, that's it. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. I would concur with that tree trunk request. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I've got a couple of announcements. The District 7 office hours will take place on Thursday, June 13. They'll take place at the Mack Road in Valley High Community Center, which is located at 7833 Center Parkway. This is an excellent opportunity for our residents to not have to come to City Hall for us to come to you, and you can tell us all of your concerns, and we can see what we can do to address them. You think that's a good idea?
Yes.
I do, too. So, again, that's going to be Thursday, June 13, and that'll take place at 6 o'clock until about 8 o'clock. And then our summer reading kickoff will take place Saturday, June 15, from 10 to noon at the Robbie Waters Library. We encourage you to come out to the library for some fun reading with games, prizes, and lots of cool treats. Notice I did say "cool treats" because we know it's going to be hot. And then finally, the District 7 Unity in the Community Parade and Festival will take place Thursday, July 4. It's going to be a wonderful opportunity for you to see the parade that goes down Windbridge Road on July 4. That will start right around 10 o'clock, I believe. If you're interested in a float or a parade or a booth at the festival, call our office at 916-808-7007. That's all, sir.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. That concludes your council comments. We will go move to City Managers' Report. Is there any City Managers' Report?
Not at this time.
Nothing to report on that item. Now, public comments matters, not on the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gara. I have 19 speakers for this item. I'd like to remind members of the public that they should have completed a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room, and these do need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the getting of each item, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers. It can be found on our website. It copies in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of our speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease any disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. Please silence any cell phones, and a cordless microphone or assisted listening device and parking validations are available from the clerk at the front of the room. So I'll read a few off. The first is Robert Copeland, Wanda Cleveland, Tanami Basuro.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Earlier tonight, Steve Panzer wanted to know about housing choice voucher discrimination, Senate Bill 329 by Holly Mitchell. I hope it does, too. So we agree on something, finally. The number-one thing that City Council should do is lift everybody, all the constituents up, financially, economically, whatever, housing, and I don't see the City Council doing that. Has the homeless population been gotten better? No. Has the rent gotten higher? Yes. So what are you going to do about this? I mean, has District 40 go downtown on K and J? There's all kinds of vacant lots, vacant buildings. What are you going to do about them? I mean, I thought the arena's supposed to lift downtown. It has not done that to my satisfaction, because all kinds of vacant buildings. And since it's about 104, 100, whatever, 100 degrees, what are you going to do about the cooling centers? I don't see any of them, or the warming centers in the wintertime. I mean, I believe we got a next football player, you fumbled the football when it comes to helping the people in your districts, and I'm talking about every one of them, including Mayor Steinberg, who's not here right now. You have not had done a good job helping the population in your own districts. And every city council district should have gotten money from Measure U. Thank you, including one and three.
Thank you. Next speaker is Wanda Cleveland, then Tanami Basuro, and then Mack Elworthy.
Good evening. I'm wondering what we're doing about the homeless population that we are seeing. All I see is that the police, the sheriffs, whoever, security guards, whatever, are just moving them along. You guys are sitting on multi-million dollars, and nothing's happening except police present. That's costly. That costs lots of money because they get paid a lot more than any of us do. So why is it that we have the police on every corner, and when the homeless, you guys got to give them a place to go? It's not fair. And my parents told me when I was very young, "Life is not fair, Wanda." But what if it was you guys? But what if it was you guys out there? What if it was you guys were down on your luck? What if it was you guys that’s sleeping on the street? I just don’t see you guys doing enough and them trying to criminalize us as advocates that are out there trying to feed and keep them sane. And we’re being talked down to like we’re not human. It’s like the mayor says, “We need to make sure all of our people are taken care of.” Homeless people are people also.
Thank you for your comments.
Tanami Basuro, and then Mac Alworthy.
Thank you, Neil, for bringing the mic over.
Thank you, Neil.
Hi, my name is Tina Basuro, and I’m suing this Sacramento County City for $155.6 billion for my stay during the railroad station ordeal and the rest of the people that were in there. We suffered greatly, and I’m holding you guys accountable for a lot of things that happened, and I don’t know if I want to discuss that right now. It has to do with the heat exhaustion, the hospital stays, the, oh, what it has to do with me is that I filmed an employee kicking a client, okay? And I heard her yelling. I filmed my art and everything. But anyway, I’m suing that, the city for that, and I filmed it, and they kicked, the police, and everybody, and the director kicked me out because I feel that I didn’t break any rules. They sent me out and told me that I’m not allowed to drink, any ice, don’t give me any ice, don’t let her go to the bathroom. And they sent me out on the curb with my leg, my, all my stuff got stolen, and the police department, everybody didn’t help me. I love the police department, okay? The fire department. I love all you, and I think that we can work together, like to propose this budget, to fix everything, and I want to help have this family be one. That’s it.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Mac Alworthy, then Mackenzie Wilson, and Keon Bliss.
What we’re seeing here tonight, black people going out to listen. You go 10 steps backwards and one forward, economics. How many nonprofit organizations do this city have on file? Or how they solicit that money? You’ve got to think about it. That is used for your votes. That’s synagogue and church politics. That’s what that is to me. You be sitting over there thinking about, “How many black people have employed anybody in this town?” I get same thing you talk, work program. I worked with Dr. Skirn, already Kennedy High, I worked program. I trained. It’s about nothing. What we’ll see about the big money, the $40 million, we’re going to see the same thing. With no lock on that, it going to get stolen, right here. Now, we saw the train, the fast train stopped, the money stopped, didn’t we? That could be the same thing that Donald Trump going. You cannot take a chance on not voting for him. If you don’t vote for him, you’re going to go to hell. If you vote for him, you’re going to go to hell, under how this city is functioning itself. Do you want to own all this property? The money that’s coming here, you could have put every house, every one person that out here homeless could have had a house, but it’s money that you have done. But you took the biggest lobbyists in the state of California, the League of California Cities, and took the folks’ money. You ain’t going to do nothing. I’m going to have the last laugh because I don’t see Donald Trump voted in again. He’s going to be voted in again. That’s the only way you save this country, is he be voted in again. If you don’t, you up shit creek.
Our next speaker is Mackenzie Wilson, then Keon Bliss. Mackenzie still here? No. Okay, Keon Bliss. Keon’s next, and then Nagia Nguyen.
I got to say, I’m pretty amazed that you were able to turn around 3/4 of a million dollars within the span of two days. For a center, for, to a community that rightly deserves it, but to give all of it to a single center that’s politically convenient for each and every one of you, to me, is tantamount to just a bribe. It’s legalized bribery. And why did you do it? You basically did it so that Sacramento Police Department, paid for by taxpayer dollars, could march in a festival in full uniform. Now, keep in mind, not a single one of them was actually prohibited from marching in the parade. From what I understand, the center staff, the actual people that organized Pride, had totally allowed SAC PD to march with them. They just couldn’t do it in uniform. Instead, you, Steve Hanson, turned around, bent over backwards to pay one single center[954.00][954.00]$750,000? Are you kidding me? Just so they could participate in a festival?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Hanson, state your point.
The public is not allowed to address the member specifically, but I would like to respond to this particular comment when he is done.
I’m going to allow the speaker finish his comments, but thank you if you could address the council.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. What they said, you know full well what you did, and you know full well why you did it. You can pretend and pontificate up there as much as you want that this was for a good cause, that we were doing it for, like you, your intentions were pure. But we all know that this wasn’t just something out of the goodness of your heart. You don’t do anything out of the goodness of your heart up in this council. We’ve seen that through your actions. I’ve told you multiple times. Actions always speak louder than your words. And considering that you ignored vital communities that are providing services over one that already has more than enough money, it’s pretty damn telling.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Shanier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to clear up one misperception, which I think is important. I’ve heard it from a lot of people, so I think it’s important to do. The $750,000 for the LGBT Center was actually months in the making. Obviously, the timing at the end of the day was close to Pride, but the two are really unrelated issues. Did I interrupt you when you were talking?
We’re going to, please keep the comments from the audience.
You guys, you all can believe it or not, however you want to do, but these are two unrelated issues. I think the relocation and also the funding that we did for homeless youth through the LGBT Center are both important statements by this council and by the city of our value system. I think there are others, lots of others, that need funding, and I’m willing, I know Mr. Hanson as well, to work with whomever we can to make sure that we lift all boats in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanier. Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Shanier. In 2016, Mayor Steinberg at a Stonewall Democratic Club forum offered $500,000 in assistance for the LGBT Center to finally buy a home. It’s been paying rent in a building that is 3,000 square feet since 1986. So since 2016, they have been looking to buy a building. Earlier this year, they entered into a purchase and sale agreement to buy a building. They came and met with me and others about two months ago, and that is when, in the budget process, we began this. And the facts are that on the 30th of May, before the center decision was even announced to exclude the officers, the mayor published in the city agenda on Thursday his budget memo that included the money for the center. That was the day before the decision broke that the center had made that decision. So I know a lot of people want to see some connection. The budget hearing happened Tuesday, the day before the center and the police leadership with the officers met, but we voted on it the day before, and today, we adopted the budget, and nothing has changed in that process from the time it was announced to the time we debated the budget last week to today. It hasn’t been influenced by this controversy. And like I said to Mr. Hudson earlier, I have asked my staff to help set up a meeting this week at the Gender Health Center, and hopefully, some of you will attend. But this is not a closed door. This is an open door, and we’ve proved, if you read the budget document, that we have done a lot for a lot of different communities, and there’s still opportunity for all of us.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. I do want to remind the council that this is not an agendized item, and it’s an opportunity for the public to speak. So we’ll continue on with the members of the public.
Yeah?
Yeah, my name is Nia. It’s not Nagia.
Yeah, thank you.
You’re welcome. Yes, so I work and live in District 4, your district, Steve Hanson, and I work at the Gender Health Center, a front, front desk. I have never seen your ass there. I’ve never heard you call or check out the center. Didn’t you call Ben Hudson, like when you were, you know, running? Right?
I’m going to ask the speaker again to address the council and not an individual council by name, and you have your two minutes. Can we make sure?
I have starved of time.
Good. Thank you. So if you could please follow the rules of decorum, I’d greatly appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Okay. So clearly, you, clearly, the council, especially District 4, has not come by to the Gender Health Center, where a lot of the unhoused transgender and queer, gender nonconforming community reside. We don’t, we basically have community members that cook raw chicken in our microwave. We have two bathrooms that multiple, multiple people have to share, including our staff. Our building is falling apart. We do not have any elevator, or it’s not accessible for people in wheelchairs, right? But yet, District 4 has not stopped by or called or even bothered to see what our needs were, but so quick to say that there is no connection between the LGBT Center and the $750,000 and Pride and cops. So I call BS. This bullshit is looting from your council. And at the Pride March this weekend, as the, as District 4’s leadership goes, there was an action that, a protest that happened, in which we stated that it was a nonviolent protest. If your leadership in District 4 was, actually had a spine, then you would have made some comment about the violent, angry Pride attendees that were attacking my people and attacking our community, including my husband.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
I hope to see your white ass at Gender Health Center.
Thank you for your comments.
Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Yolanda Vargas, then Noah Davidson, then Gail Pittman.
You can stay there, Ms. Vargas. They’ll bring the.
I’m fine with moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Yolanda Vargas. I just wanted to comment on the center being, oh, that works as well. Oh, sorry, there’s a technical difficulty. So as I was saying earlier, ADA compliance is important, but it’s also important to note that the ADA is not the ceiling, it is the floor, as we like to say in the disability community. That does not dictate full inclusion. There are multiple parts to inclusion. That includes things like social media, outreach to stakeholders that have disabilities, and that’s something that unfortunately, beyond physical access, the center has failed to do in reaching out to stakeholders, while the Gender Health Center has actually done a decent job, considering that it is not their main focus. But again, we intersect with the queer community. Me, as a queer, disabled woman, desperately need services, and again, are not seeing the best practices that go beyond physical access. Things like having captioning on social media, things like using cultural competent language when describing disability, those are things that could have been done prior to any increase in funding. And I think that I would really like to stress, regardless of what happens with the hopeful collaboration between the GHC and the SAC LGBT Center, that the community as a whole reaches out to disabled-centered resources like Resources for Independent Living, Disability Rights California, the California Foundation for Independent Living Centers. Again, please, don’t use the ADA as the ceiling. It’s really the base, and there are so many other things that can be done to do more inclusive things for the queer, disabled community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Noah Davidson. Following Noah is Gail Pittman, then Twayconda Strain.
My name is Noah. I’m here to talk about 5G and cell antennas again. This is a picture of the sticker of the antenna near our home. The sticker is very small and facing the street and not visible at all from our property. The sticker says, “Radio frequency fields beyond this point may exceed the FCC occupational exposure limits. The FCC’s occupational exposure limit is five times higher than the general population exposure limit. Clearly, whoever permitted the antenna, i.e. the city of Sacramento, and whoever installed the antenna, i.e. Verizon Wireless, knew that there was an area around the antenna that has the potential to exceed FCC general population exposure limits, which almost certainly extends onto our property. We were never warned about this. I first raised this issue to Verizon, the FCC, and the city of Sacramento over a month ago, and to this day, none of these entities have addressed the issue. How is this acceptable? Is this even legal? I spoke with a Verizon legal representative today, who told me that Verizon would not turn off the antenna, despite not being able to tell me if exposure on our property could exceed the FCC limits. He told me that Verizon does not have to address this concern, and that I need to take it up with the FCC and the city of Sacramento. I have already been taking these steps, and again, no one can give me a straight answer, if our exposure has the potential to exceed FCC limits on our property, and if it does, what can be done about it? I do appreciate the efforts you have put into this matter, but I also have to recognize that these efforts have accomplished functionally nothing. The antenna is still there, and we have not even had our basic safety questions answered, questions that I believe should have been able to be answered before the antenna was installed. I understand that you have a lot on your plate, the budget, the zoo, and all the other matters I’ve seen discussed at these council meetings, but hopefully, you can understand the frustration we are experiencing.
For your comments, your two minutes is complete.
Knowing that these matters are being put ahead of our family’s safety.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Davidson.
Next speaker is Gail Pittman, then Twayconda Strain, then Atunde Ikuku.
Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for this opportunity. Full disclosure, I am not a resident of the city of Sacramento. I live in unincorporated Sacramento County, a stone’s throw from Councilmember Ashby’s district. I work in District 5, and I serve on the Board of Directors of the Gender Health Center, which is in District 4. I’m here to talk about the Thursday, June 6th announcement, and obviously, you know about this at this point, that was made in the Sacramento Bee regarding the decision by the organizers of SAC Pride to reverse the decision to allow off-duty police officers to participate at Pride in uniform. While I personally disagree with that decision, I’m not here to talk specifically about that. I wrote an op-ed piece that was published in the Sacramento Bee, and you can read that if you’re interested. What I am here for is to share concerns regarding how that decision was made. There’s conflicting reports, both in the Sacramento Bee as well as by Capital Public Radio regarding how that meeting was set up, who was at the meeting, et cetera. My understanding is that Councilmember Hanson organized the meeting. It was involved somehow in good meeting the meeting. That was reported by the Bee as well as by Capital Public Radio to address the dissent in the LGBTQ+ community around this issue. Whoever organized the meeting, however it came together, I think that the effort and the intention was noble. The outcome was problematic. What I would like to know, and I think other community members would like to know as well, is who was at that meeting, who represented each side of the issue, and whether or not there were financial agreements that were made in exchange for the police being able to march at Pride. I appreciate the clarity regarding the $750,000 allocation to the LGBT Center. It clarifies that correlation is not the same as causation. That said, I think it’s a good reminder that there are other LGBT orgs in our city, both in District 4 as well as in other districts. The other issue that I think needs to be brought up is the possibility that the center may be a training provider for SAC PD, and if that’s the case, that potentially is a financial conflict of interest.
Thank you for your comments.
That is made in exchange for allowing police to march at Pride.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that.
Our next speaker is Twayconda Strain, then Atunde.
Twayconda Strain?
Um, Atunde.
Nope.
Monica.
Oh, here you go. Oh, here you go. Yeah, Tunde.
Thank you. And then Monica Booken Gra. Booken Egra, thank you. Etunde?
Good evening. So I'm just going to read off what I wrote earlier. As someone engaged in social work and organizing here in Sacramento, especially within the queer community and other marginalized communities, I wish the fuel for many of our fights wasn't the fact that people aren't just dying in Sacramento, they are being killed. The community members I serve, and let me also state, I work at Gender Health Center and I'm also one of the still here organizers, the community members I serve are suffering things like lack of affordable housing, which results in homelessness, which results, or which makes maintaining employment nearly impossible, putting them on the streets to be subjected to harassment via law enforcement, and anti-unhoused dispositions held by many of those privileged in Sacramento, and we simply cannot keep going like this. They are lacking equitable access to healthcare that isn't made to be such a disparity due to their gender identity or transgender intersection. They are needing genuinely safe, disability-accessible places to exist in. They are needing more radical and progressive efforts to be adopted by our council. We need equitable resources shared with places like Gender Health Center, who has been doing the work for our people, by our people. We have long deserved to be appreciated and see tangible solutions to what has been lacking. We can see that the funding is there, so where is that allocation? I look forward to the conversation Steve Hanson agreed to and proposed today, as well as District Five.
Thank, thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Monica Booken Egra, then Independence Taylor.
Monica Booken Egra.
Monica here.
Okay.
Thank you. Following Monica is Independence Taylor, and then Trina Allen.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Monica Booken Egra. I'm a community member, and I'm a social worker as well. I work with kids who have disabilities. I'm a community organizer as well. I am a queer undocumented woman, and I'm here because of the actions that have happened to my community, and I do want to thank everybody that is behind me, not in front of me, because they are the ones that supported me and they are the ones who kept me safe when I was being pushed, not the police, because they smirked behind me. Okay? So my community is the one that kept me safe, not the people, not the people in blue. On top of that, I do want to, I do want to say that those $1750,000 you say that have been going on for quite a while, that is going to the LGBT Center, how is that going to help for the homeless youth? Because we still have 50% of the population being homeless youth. And that $750,000, is that going to keep, keep my homeless youth, LGBT homeless youth out of, out of homelessness? I don't know, right? You don't have answers, because that's a no. Because a lot of what you are worried about is taking pictures with brown and black people and gay people and posting it on your social media, and that's what everybody here does. And so that's what I wanted to say. You need to get off social media and start, no, and talking to your community. Talk to your community, not the rich community, because I don't see myself represented at the LGBT Center. If you see the people that were all sitting there, none of them look like me, none of them have their intentions towards me. I may see a Latina person, a Latino, Latinx person, but they don't have my best intentions. And I'm here for my community, and I like to think that with my, with the work that I do, I still pay my taxes, and I do pay for all of you to be here, not to be giving money to corporations. LGBT Center is a corporation that puts this huge ass pride while there's people who don't even have food that is meant for them. And so that's what I'm, that's what I'm here to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Independence Taylor, then Trina Allen, then Jane Doe.
A lot of you will probably remember me. I was that homeless 17-year-old who was coming in here four years ago, and since then, not much has really changed, honestly. And I think it's really upsetting to hear that the LGBT Center, who never once helped or gave resources, and actually on multiple occasions kicked me and other homeless youth out of services for weeks on end, is getting all that funding, because the only community center that's really helped me over all these years to get stable, to not be homeless, is the Gender Health Center. And for them to be directly overlooked in this, in this mass amount of funding is really not good on you guys. And honestly, when we're talking about homeless youth populations, 40 to 50% of homeless youth are LGBT, and the LGBT Center does nothing, like they provide funding, they have these grants, but more so they just lie in the pockets of other cis-gay-rich-white men in Sacramento who continuously keep doing that. And honestly, really though, the Pride Festival, how much money did they pay Lizzo while they're saying they don't have funding to feed in those homeless youth? How much did they just pay Lizzo? First off. And so like, why do they need additional funding if they're not even allocating their funding properly?
Next speaker is Trina Allen. Trina Allen, Jane Doe, Mary E. Tappel, then Ebony Stallworth.
Good evening.
I'm queer, hella queer, and it has nothing to do with what genders I'm attracted to or who I sleep with. It has to do with my values. I'm anti-imperialist, anti-racist, anti-cis sexist, and dedicated to the liberation of all oppressed people. Queer is radical. We are in direct opposition to institutions and ideologies that subjugate, steal, and kill. We are in direct opposition to white supremacy and heteronormativity. We are not just like you. The LGBT Center leadership, and I like to differentiate between long-term leadership and current or former staff members, leadership has a long history of centering white, middle, or upper-class gays, even deliberately taking out the T only a decade ago. When Black trans women have an average lifespan of 35 years old, when 50% of unhoused youth are LGBTQIA+ and being harassed or arrested for their unhoused status, when SAC police and sheriffs violently assault peaceful Black queer and trans protesters at the DA's office and book a female community leader in the male section of the jail, when center leadership fires trans youth without cause, when a Black-led queer and trans collective explicitly details demands for change within the center and they do nothing but renege on a mild concession about uniforms, this is more than short-sighted. It is inter-community violence. Law enforcement shouldn't be at Pride, period. Imperialist corporations shouldn't sponsor Pride, period. You cannot invite impressive institutions that make us pay $20, $20 for the exploitation of our own people. That is fucking gross. This council should spend more time addressing the terrorism enacted by its police department on Black and Brown folks rather than worrying about rainbows on uniforms or who marches where. $750,000 given to the LGBT Center would be one thing, especially since our communities are so deeply in need, but the absence of supporting the Gender Health Center and other organizations that actually prioritize the most marginalized folks in queer and trans communities, it feels cruel. It feels like white gays with newly acquired financial and social privilege are being offered a handshake of respectability while everyone else is being walked over.
Your two minutes is complete.
This is divisive. Offering the center a contract to train your LEOs on how not to harass and beat QTPOCs seems just like...
Your time is up. Appreciate your time here. Go ahead and shut...
My next speaker is Jane Doe.
...handle, and speakers won't fix it.
Trina, thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Trina, your time is up. You've exceeded your time to speak, Trina. If you continue to speak, Trina, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Trina, you've exceeded your, thank you very much for your comments.
The next speaker is Jane Doe, then Mary E. Tappel, then Ebony Stallworth. Jane Doe? Thank you. If you'll approach the podium.
If you'd like to approach the podium, if not, we're going to continue on to the next speaker.
As an activist for Palestinian liberation and queer liberation, I am familiar with the practice of pink washing whereby the Israeli government uses its half-hearted tolerance of white queer citizens to downplay its illegal and murderous treatment of Palestinians at the hands of Israeli police and armed forces. For the last 150 years, Palestinians have been subject to displacement, gentrification, harassment, discrimination, rape, and murder, while at the same time, the Israeli government has attempted to tout itself as a beacon of democracy and human rights. Does this sound familiar to anyone? What we saw this last weekend in Sacramento was nothing short of an American brand of pink washing, as SAC PD and many corporations allied themselves with SAC Pride in order to save face for these same crimes against queer people of color in America. In an act of betrayal, bribery, and pandering led by Steve Hanson and Police Chief Daniel Hahn, the Sacramento City Council, Sacramento Police Department, and the Executive Board of the Sacramento LGBT Center went behind the backs of Sacramento's queer people of color in favor of state violence at the hands of the police and the corporate interests of private health insurance companies, tech giants, and automobile manufacturers, among others. As a representative of Hanson's District Four and the larger Sacramento area, I am disgusted with the actions of my representative, my city council, and the Executive Board of the Sacramento LGBT Center, which is supposed to support my peers and I first and foremost, not the police department that shamelessly murdered Stefan Clark, Ryan Ellis, and Marshall Miles, and harassed thousands more. In conclusion, I am here to say, we do not support police presence at Pride, and we do not support corporate presence at Pride. In the words of my colleague, Pride is not a celebration of inclusivity, it is not gay Coachella. It is an ongoing riot against capitalism and state violence. I hope that in the future, you discontinue your support of these organizations and instead support the needs of the disenfranchised members of the queer community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Mary Tappel. Next speaker is Mary Tappel, then Ebony Stallworth, then Pamela Marquez, and Rowan Dawson is our final speaker.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor Guerra, and now the rest of the members of the council. And I'm, most of my comments are referred to Regional Transit RT. I'm not sure now who, who on the city council actually sits on the Regional Transit Board, or if any members are, okay, thank you. Anyway, but first I wanted to thank all of you for participating in Pride or assisting, helping in any way. I was there mainly to honor a retiring North Area Commander, Captain Pam Seifert, and she's been our first police captain who's been a North Area Commander. I've been active a little bit at least in the community, sometimes more so in the North Area for about 30 years now, and I've known all the police captains since that time that were North Area commanders. She's our first woman one. So it was really important to me to be there to, to honor her, and particularly because about her last day of work is about this Friday. So anyway, I just wanted to say that first, but we had, again, at the Light Rail Station, this is Marconi Arcade, on a very hot day during a heat wave, we had someone emotionally melting down, and we had no security there, and of course, we had no spare water. So I'm again, again, going to make my suggestion, and this time with at least some people with clout, who are on the Regional Transit Board there. I feel all the stations need to have security that are the feeder stations, and this was not during commute hours, it was about midday, but it was very hot already, and so many people would have been better off if there could have been a security person there and one that has supply of cold water with them to give away. It would do so much for the ticket checkers on the train who have to deal with these people who are melting down in the heat waves, and all the other, other customers or riders of RT that are there helpless, trying to figure out what to do, and we didn't have anything we could do that was practical. So thank you very much for anything you can do, of course, non-commute hours only and only distance stations.
Your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you for your time. Yes.
Ebony Stallworth, then Pamela Marquez.
Hello, can you hear me clearly? Can everybody back here hear me clearly? Okay. So I'm just going to start by noting that I actually am associated with the LGBT Center. I am the only current, the current and only Black facilitator, a part of the 20-somethings group for the LGBT Center. So I've personally spoke, spoken to David and various staff members who work at the LGBT Center. I'm also associated with the GHC Center. They've actually allowed me, as a queer-trans entrepreneur, to run self-care and soap-making workshops for our most marginalized communities. Thank you, Nia. And I also have been associated with various other activist groups, and I've also worked with children since the age of 16, and so I've worked with nonprofits in the Sacramento community. I just wanted to lay that out there, just to note that while I was going through all of this, I've been homeless, I have moved several times due to the housing crisis in Sacramento, and I noted something that when, I know we're not supposed to address council members directly, but I do appreciate the fact that Councilmember Harris did note redefining the process, right? We're all talking about, you know, caring about all of our communities, and I think the talk of all that is great, but as an entrepreneur, there's one, I, I want to know, right? What does that process look like, right? I've been raised by a project manager and a human resources manager, so I, I want to know the process, right? I looked up the Youth Commission, there were broken links, and then I looked at other pages for the Youth Commission, and I couldn't really get clear answers as to what the Youth Commission really does, the age requirements, because depending on the county one lives in, depending on the state, and depending on the city one lives in...
Thank you for your comments tonight.
The term youth is, the term youth is often redefined. And so I know that we're talking about helping everybody, but I'm curious...
Appreciate your comments tonight, and thank you. Your time is complete. If the clerk could please call the next person.
My next speaker is Pamela Marquez and Rowan Dawson.
You've exceeded your time. I'm going to ask you to please step away from the podium. Thank you for your time here. If you continue to interrupt, after exceeding your time, I'm going to have to ask you to I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you one more time that if you continue to speak, you're just, and you're to continue to disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting, that you're going to be violating Chapter 5 A1 of the City's Council Rules and Procedures. And if you don't stop, I will order you to leave the meeting. Do you understand the warning? What's your name?
Ebony Stallworth.
Ebony Stallworth. I'm asking you again, do you understand this warning?
I, I understand.
Oh, thank you. Then I'm going to ask you to step away from the podium so that we can ask another person to sleep. Thank you for your time.
I apologize for going over. However, people are dying.
Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you coming here tonight. Okay, I'm going to ask, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Thank you. If the clerk could please call the name.
Our next speaker is Pamela Marquez, and then Rowan Dawson.
Good evening.
My name is Pamela Marquez, and I'm here to speak against the 5G cell towers. Last year, the Ramusini Institute of Italy published their final results for one of the largest studies ever conducted evaluating the effects of exposure to radio frequency radiation, the type of radiation emitted by cell phones and cell antennas. The study exposed rats to whole-body radiation 19 hours a day for the entire duration of their lives. The amount of radiation they were exposed to was under the FCC limits and would therefore be considered safe by the FCC and telecom companies. These conditions were very similar to what people with antennas installed near their homes will be exposed to, i.e. long-term whole-body exposure. The study found an increased incidence of tumors of the brain and heart in rats exposed to radio frequency radiation. The findings supported the conclusions made by the National Toxicology Program Study, another recently completed large-scale study on the health effects of radio frequency radiation. Both of these studies are considered landmark studies by many experts in the field because they clearly demonstrate harm at non-thermal levels of exposure considered safe by the FCC. As a result, researchers from the study, as well as many other experts, have called for a reevaluation of the safety standards used to protect us from this radiation. I think that it is appalling that Verizon would subjects people to this health risk against their will and that the city of Sacramento would sign off on it. Our family has been trying to get this antenna removed from the front of our home for the past three months, a home where a three-year-old and a five-year-old live. It has been extremely difficult to get any information from the parties involved. Worse yet, each party seems to pass the buck to the other parties, with no one wanting to take responsibility for the health risks we are being subjected to. We want to know what is being done to move this antenna from, and what other Sacramentoans can do who do not... can do who do not want an antenna near their home.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Councilmember Ashby?
Is there one last speaker?
There is one last speaker left.
After that speaker, if that's-
Yep.
Our final speaker this evening is Rowan Dawson.
Hello, council. I'm just a citizen of the city, and I've been watching the situation happen and escalate between, I guess, the marginalized in our community and people of power in this community. And it was really hard to watch that happen, and it felt very irresponsible as I was watching it unfold throughout the weeks from the information that was being put out there. There wasn't a lot of clarity, and not just on my part, as someone who advocates and tries to put information out there, I was having a hard time having to research the information, to put information out there, just to have the facts there that seemed to be causing and inflaming the situation even further from just the original statements of having the police there or not having the police at Pride. And I just wanted to know what the council is going to do in the future to be more clear and also to show that they're listening to the marginalized in our community. I'm wondering if maybe, a lot of things that were coming at me were possibly that y'all didn't know who to talk to, that you didn't realize what some of us were feeling or what some of us were thinking, and that, in my opinion, the way it was handled, it caused a really unsafe space for citizens in this city at Pride, on both sides. Between the protesters and the people coming, there was just a very unsafe space created because I didn't see a lot of foresight on the city, knowing that this would be a very disruptive situation, like, a very disruptive call to have the police come in or not come in and see how that was volatile, and not really put anything in place to make sure that the citizens were safe above the situation. And I don't really know what is being done on your end, because I'm new to some of this, so I'd really like to have more clarity on what is going on, and I wanna, I'm really happy to hear in this meeting that you're willing to listen and talk to the GHC. I know that they've done a lot to help the LGBT community, and so, I just really wanna know and see that you hold that promise that you've made, and actually start listening to not just trans and LGBT, but also POC in our community, because they've been shouting for years, asking you to listen and help.
Thank you for your comments this evening. I have, may I vote for Ashby?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Garrett. I just felt compelled to say a couple of things, because first of all, just from my perspective of watching this happen, I have not been to your health center either, but I'd be happy to and come see what you do there and learn a little bit more. I will reach out and come see it. I, I would like to know what you do there and come, and come be, be supportive of you. I ran for mayor, and I lost, but I was at the forum for mayor where this was discussed back in 2016. Stonewall threw a forum and asked the mayoral candidates if we would support the LGBT Center, and I said yes, and so did Mayor Steinberg. That's the first time I remember the LGBT Center coming up and folks asking for additional funding for that center. And I just wanted you to know that, you know, from my, my point of view, that has been a very long, ongoing conversation. I don't think it was linked to the other issue around police, but I can see why people came to that conclusion, because the timing was, it just really did appear that way. It really did. So, I don't blame you for having, for feeling that was the outcome. The other thing from, the, the other thing from my perspective is that I wish there was a way somehow for folks to see how hard Councilmember Hanson fought on this issue. And I know, I know that sounds, I know that probably sounds that-
I'm gonna ask the public to please allow the council member to finish their comments. Thank you for your time.
Self-serving, but I owe him nothing. I'm independently elected, I can do whatever I want, my district doesn't, doesn't matter, I don't need to stand up for Steve. But I am a truth-teller, and I saw what happened, and he pushed back very hard on multiple entities to try to help solve an issue that really he didn't create. And actually, the last speaker, I would almost agree with you 100%. I think the whole thing created an unsafe environment for everybody involved. My position in this was similar to Mary who got up and spoke. Pam Seifert is a friend of mine. She's the first woman to be the captain of the North Area. She happens to be also a lesbian, and I went to support her, because she and I, as a, as a tandem, are the first time ever that women have sat in the council member seat and the North Area Command seat, and I just felt that was special, and I know how much it hurt her to not be included in that parade. It was very, I think people felt, on both sides, felt that they weren't being heard. And we need to do a better job of making sure that everybody feels heard. Also, one of the speak, also, one of the speakers said, defined what the Pride event meant to you. I think it was you. I'm sorry, can't remember your name, but it was, it was very informative to me, because you said it's not about inclusivity, and for you, it probably wasn't, but for many people who were there, it was. And being excluded made them feel like they weren't a part of it. And maybe, and, and you, and you may be, you may be right, and you may be right about the fact that, that, that it's not supposed to be about inclusivity. But the fact that people have two different definitions about what that event means to them is also part of the problem. And so, we need to be clear about what we want to achieve. We need to be clear about what we want to achieve. Okay? So, I just wanted you to hear from me that I think that there's a lot more than what, to what happened than was discussed here tonight. I'm more than happy to come see the center and learn more about what you do. Okay? Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And Councilmember Hanson, thank you very much for your effort to bring people together on this. I know there's still people hurt on both sides of the issue, but I also saw you work really hard.
All right, thank you. There are no more items on the agenda that concludes our business at 8:00 PM. Thank you.